All right, now call order the October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting of the board of trustees, time being six thirty P M. Any local please?
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee T?
Here.
Trustee Wigan?
Here.
Mayor Proton McDonald?
Here.
Mayor Shosey?
Here. Um, are there any amendments to the attendance evening? Are there any conflicts of interest related to the event I was seeing? Well, we will now move on to item B one, public comment, individuals wishing to speak on non-adjunct items. Please go up to the podium, um, state your name, address, um, and you'll be limited to three minutes.
Sure.
My name is Fox, and then I have a little bit of three sixty-four, I don't know what's going. Um, I got it.
Since we have a board member online and.
Oh, sure.
I want to make sure they all hear you.
Okay, yeah, appreciate it. Um, I got two things. Um. We live in Buffalo Creek and, uh, you're supposed to be how it was better than we built behind us soon, which is a good thing when that's around me. Um, but there was also something involved with, uh, on the, trying to put an asphalt plant back there. Uh, just one word, you know, I think that's a terrible idea. Uh, that's not a good way to sell houses and, and get a tax rate on it. Not a common economist, but, uh. And then the second thing, uh, less pleasant, that, uh, kind of brings me to it is, I heard about, uh, a lady that was here a few weeks back that was shouted down for reading from a library book that our children are able to read. Um, is that a back and forth or how does this go? Uh, this is public comment, I mean, I can definitely get in contact if you want to say we can spend contact. I'll, uh, just reach you by email. Um, I'd like to get one. It's, uh, let's not forget. Thank you. Okay. Well, yeah, thank you.
Hi Karen, I'm Karen, I live in Illinois. Um, so I wanted to come before you and tell you, in case you didn't know, that October is Down Syndrome Awareness Month. And I have a Down Syndrome and, um, I think it's just important to realize that we have diversity in our community, not only in race and gender and all those things, but also in, um, in developmental disabilities. And I really want to point out to our staff, our staff and our board that, um, diversity is super important. And just because you're neuro differently than other people does not make you less than. And I look forward to the time when my son's able to be able to come and participate in more activities, but we are super grateful for the park activity that happened this summer, fourth of July and things like that, that my son was able to attend. And, um, I also wanted to point out, um, I know there's a lot of talk around our community activities mission here in town. And it breaks my heart that people are trying to do it in a different way or reconstruct it or whatever is going on. I've lived in Wellington since two thousand nine. My son was three days old when we walked into our grandparent's home in Wellington. And back then I was working with Linda Kinsley on the V A C at that time. And I really wanted to make sure that we keep community involved in community, especially our events.
Yeah, I mean, that is great, this is an agenda.
Oh, it's a great presentation, not an agenda item, not actually.
I think it's for, uh, yes, okay, perfect.
So I just wanted to bring that up and say how important it has been for my family to attend the community activities that are going on in Wellington. And I think it's super important to our community to have a say from the community members what we want to see happen with our community activities commission and the activities that we choose to have here. And I really hope that it's not outsourced and broken down into pieces and micromanage in that passion that I see happening. Um, it's really disconcerting, but disvalued to the residents themselves because we are residents, we should be available to be able to make those choices, what we want to see happen in our town. We should have that opportunity to volunteer. And our children should have the opportunity to volunteer doing those things. And that is such a great bonding experience for our youth. Come together and volunteer at these events. And it's bonding and it's teaching them, I mean, when you said mayor, when you said your campaign, you said, I have a, he was service generated heart. Um, and I really want that blessing to be upon our children and our youth at this time. So they can get involved with that community activities commission and they can say, hey, this is what I wanted. That happened with my son Sawyer, he was able to talk about his brother and his special needs and how old he needs to be met. And there is nothing. I can raise my child as much as I want to. I can parent my child as much as I want to. But when they walk out that door and they are able to do those things on their own, that is a gift that I cannot give them. He found it within himself. I mean, thank you.
Hi, Tom. Um, I wanted to just reiterate with Karen and back up on this, um, I love, uh, I've, I've always been very involved in community work engagements ever since I was little. My parents would take us out and we would help campaign for their friends growing up. My parents, my mom was president of the education society, um, back in Kentucky. My dad, when we moved to California, was president of the children's burn fund agency in LA. Um, my entire life has been filled with volunteering and, um, I just, my comment would be that, um, there are enough citizens in the town to be, to become involved in the committee. Um, that I just, I, I don't understand the structure of the town, honestly. Yeah, but I would like to say that I would like to have more citizens in the committee. I don't know that you need a trustee in the county. Um, and let, let the, the people that live here, uh, that want to contribute their time, because there's not, not everyone can contribute in all these different name, like as a trustee, you know, you have to be voted in and things like that. And so if there are a ton of people who want to participate, then let them lead and then present to the board what, what they would like to do. I just think that it's a great opportunity and we're certain involved. That's, that's what you said.
Thank you. On to the consent agenda consists of the minutes of the September thirteenth, point, point two, and the September twenty seventh, point, point two, board trustee meetings. Make it a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda in the minutes of the September thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two board of trustees meeting as well as the minutes from the September twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two board of trustees.
I'd second. Make it a local, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yeah.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee T?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald? She's, she's not showing up in online, so Mayor Shosey?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the first presentation tonight will be the twenty twenty-three budget. Um, public comment, not generally taken presentations, we want to provide comments, uh, related to the draft budget. Patty or, uh, I guess Patty or C N thirty.
I'll start this out. So this is meeting staff for a requirement to present the budget prior to lockover, did please, twelve good officials. So we are complying with that requirement. Um, I want to give a huge thank you to the finance committee who spent a lot of time going through this budget prior to the board of trustees saying that, um, the board of trustees went through many work sessions and do well experience and, and along with the leadership team. Spent a lot of time going through, trying to make sure the numbers tied out, everything that's on, I want to make it, do a shout out to my leadership team all the work that they did. Then this is the draft document. Um, we will provide a lot of community input tonight based on the mayor's and the mayor's discretion. I was hoping, we talked about it the other day and we could finalize it, but I assumed you were good to go with a public input tonight. Um, so there'll be additional opportunities for public input at the budget meeting next week and November eighth at the regular meeting. And if we need to have more meetings with public comment, we will continue to do so until those people are satisfied with anything that answered. So Charity has done an amazing job with this. Right? She's been awesome. She's for the town, so I really appreciate her time and her tenacity and her just uh, dive into it, no matter what, no matter what is going on, she's willing to figure out what the answers are. And I may not like the answers when she comes in, she's kind of, or Patty is going to be okay. So, you know, she's willing to just use transparency she can with me. And, and this is the same with the board of trustees, I will appreciate that. But she's going to be the one here presenting the budget for you. Excuse me. Um, I have a couple of questions that I want to make clear. Um, first and foremost, the budget before you have all of the changes that were discussed in your work session. So it should reflect all of the issues before, longer, they see reflected in the budget. Um, we are presenting an unbalanced budget, but we have the funds in our fund balances to adhere to our fund balance policy. And then, um, staff took the approach to our budget, revenue is very, we're going to, we're going to place in indication that we have not a session. So the revenues that you see in this budget are very moderate because we don't want to over project it in each season. And this budget is being presented with the water and those revenues that were given to us by the publics in the rate study because we have not made a decision on where we're going to start. So, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I think you guys have done a great job and thanks again to the finance committee as well as leadership staff. Uh, you guys have done a killer job putting this together. Um, yeah, I, I think we've squeezed just about as much as, we're probably about to get out of it. So appreciate the work you guys have done.
I, I'm very content with the multiple sessions that we've had thus far, going through every single department budget, C I P. Uh, I think that we've had a very thorough review. All of our comments have been implemented. And now we're at the point, of course, where we're looking for the public. So I, I'm very content with the process so far and what's being, um, presented. So I appreciate all the work that everyone's done and I'm looking forward to public comment. Thank you.
Good. Yeah, so likewise, I appreciate all the work that's been done with the finance committee, with the board. I appreciate Steph coming in and the board and going through all of the uh, different budgets and having opportunity to give input. Um, hey, just one thing that does continue to concern me, I understand we do have money in the fund balance, we need the, the minimums required on that. Um, but again, just coming back to, I would like to see us get to at least a balanced budget and figuring out what we can do to get there. I appreciate all the hard work it's kind of into cutting things back, um, but going into a country that who knows what's going to happen, I think, going in with an unbalanced budget. Just because we have an unbalanced doesn't mean we should do it. So that's really kind of my only thought on that, but would love to get input from our members of the community.
Um, yes, so for those in the audience that don't know what our minimum fund balance allocation is, can you please tell me what that is?
So our fund down policy states that we have had a thirty-three percent for four months operating revenue or a hundred and ten percent of our debt service. So I took our first quarter financial reports that were preliminary and created the fund balance for what I'm presenting in the budget and adhere to what our policy requires.
Does that first quarter include the rate adjustment for water or did include that?
It includes.
Okay, so and we saw that rate increase, so we can very well be sitting higher if we were to evaluate the second quarter. Got it?
I won't have something for the number.
Understandable, yeah.
But we're trying to be very conservative with the budget, so I don't want to over project.
And I'm appreciative. I'm appreciative of Trustee Gator requesting, um, for us to be able to sit and go through this line item by line item. I'm grateful for the staff to do that as well, because coming in as a new trustee, I have a lot of questions. And this was an amazing opportunity for us to learn in detail what P P E actually purchases, that it wasn't just gloves and masks, diving in and hearing that that is also equipment for protection, which was a huge one that I had brought up in previous budgets. Um, so no, I think that education not only helped us, well, me, I can't speak for all of us, as a trustee, but also the general public in learning what the budget is about. So I'm grateful.
I appreciate all the transparency that you had here and looks like you made some really hard decisions that we had to do. Again, we're going to have a tough year, I think, or a couple, couple years tough. So it's good to get on top of a ride down. I think you've done a great job. Thank you.
One really important piece that I missed in my notes, um, I met with Sergeant Cherry this afternoon because the L C S O gets submitted a budget, um, with a request for a corporal and also for another position. The way our budget looks right now, we aren't adding any staff. Um, and he and I talked about what, you know, what they could, you know, can, are they okay right now? He's, he's here tonight and can speak to that. Um, I advised him that adding a position for L C S O is a top priority. So if we get through first quarter of twenty twenty-three and we see that our revenues are higher than what we expected or projected, that we could potentially come to the town of Wellington and board of trustees and ask for that additional position as a mid-year hire. Um, but that was the discussion we had today, but then he's here and I'm sure he could speak about it if you would like for him to. Um, the other item that we talked about was the, um, right now we pay about fifteen thousand dollars a year in rent for L C S O and that in that block, that block corner. And we have an empty building over it, well, the old town hall. We talked about moving them over into that building, um, saving the town approximately fifteen thousand dollars a year. He was amenable to that. And I thought I'd throw that out to the board of trustees and see how you felt about that as well. We could start, you know, moving that direction because we just have a lease, but we have to talk to the landlord and, and get that other building up to speed, you know, ready to be, you know, for another department's going there. But all I'm looking for is maybe from head office, who is supportive of that.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, is Mayor Proton on?
Yeah. Yeah. I am. Thank you so much. I don't have a lot of comments. I believe that Patty's leadership and Charity's expertise will be able to get us through this. I'm looking forward to hear, hearing the outcome of the community engagement piece and appreciate all the staff's hard work.
Perfect, yeah. Um, you've been working really hard and did in there, did everything you can and make the cuts where we can. Um, you've done a heck of a job, staff done a heck of a job. Um, thank you for that. Um, thanks, Patty, everybody involved. Um, yeah, now I guess we will open it up for public comment, uh, if there is anybody so interested.
Thanks for sharing, uh, I live in Wellington Downs. Couple things, one, I appreciate that the budget is a difficult process, so I want to thank staff and I'll be appreciating your time on that. Um, on the issue of, um, L C S O asks and her inability to do that. I would ask that maybe one of the top priorities of this board would be to increase the economic development for this town so that we can provide adequate coverage and safety for its citizens. Um, we spent a lot of time on a lot of things this year, but that hasn't been one of them. So I'm as a resident who would like to have twenty-four hour coverage and not see a, have a shortage on the safety for our citizens, I would ask for that. And then in addition, Trustee T, you mentioned the budget for the water, um, and could have made a blanket comment that water rates were going up. Um, I know that that budget is based on prior numbers and so hopefully the revenue will stay stable, but um, I hope, I, I just caution that we don't say that because there's a lot of information there and a lot of concern residents. And we need to make sure that people understand what the proposed rates are. So just being careful. Um, but then I do appreciate that the budget was based on prior budget numbers, so that we're careful.
Thank you.
Karen, I'm Karen, I live in Illinois. Um, after attending the board work session and meeting that you all had with budget and seeing you guys through, go through all of these line items and things. One thing stood out to me from that work session was that there's not actual numbers in a lot of the proposed budget. That really kind of freaks me out. Um, so I hope we live by and we have the budget. And I can't just say, well, I'd really like for us to take a trip next month. So I can decide maybe five hundred dollars to do a trip here in town or a trip here in Colorado, I mean, staycation. And then my husband, my husband, he says, I really think that should be like fifteen hundred dollars. So we have to figure out what that actual number is going to be before we can make the plan to spend the money. And there has to be a plan in place. What I think worked in that work session was both actual numbers are not on the budget at this time. So I think it's really a disservice to approve a budget that doesn't have all the actual measures, that doesn't have a balanced budget. And I really feel like this is kind of like, let's shove this through, although I've seen the town staff members go to all ends of trying to go through those line items with you guys, and they've been absolutely amazing. Um, and it's been really great to watch the town staff work together and figure those things out and figure out ways where there could be money saved and um, also from you guys saying that you would do lower on your budget for discretionary funds. That's amazing because we are in utterly uncertain time right now financially. And I thought it was really great that the board would say, hey, we're in that kind of war zone so that we can focus on other areas that are more important. But I'm really worried about voting on the budget, not all the actual numbers. And having just four months able to cope with what the regulations say that have to be there, that's also disconcerting. Um, we have to do better at planning on our money and our budgeting. And I really hate to see a budget being approved without all the actual numbers. You guys, it's a service to our town residents and we deserve to see what those numbers are before you vote on what our budget should be, where our funds that we provide for this town, through our taxes and buying here and getting gas here, raising your children here. All that settles tax revenue, how we find the residents. So I would like to see that the residents be able to see what those actual numbers are and it's not to be voted on until we have those actual numbers. And that might take a little bit of extra time. But honestly, where would it be a town, where wouldn't be a town of Wellington without residents that are here? And I think that that's something that the board of trustees and the town of Wellington employees could do for our towns, that we are not so worried about what's going to happen in our town. Um, yeah, thanks.
I mean, I would like to.
Come on up.
Just kind of put it in.
Absolutely. So I can, I can start off and I'll have Charity fill in. So a lot of the numbers are estimates. Um, and I'm, and, and we're not quite sure what some of those numbers will be. We're, it's our best estimate, our best guess. Um, it's, and I'm not quite.
I would go ahead. So the numbers that are estimates are our revenues, because we can't ever expect how much we're going to get from sale tag, how much we're going to buy. Property taxes are very kind of uncounting ways we can see what we receive. Uh, our expenditures are not estimates. Those are solid numbers of what we're going to use. The other estimates we have are how much do we expect to be with twenty twenty-two? What are we going over in each line? We don't know that until we close out twenty twenty-two, which happens to be in March. So that's just how government action works. Um, I don't have finals for all of that because of how things have kind of transpired, but we're working on our rollover numbers. Our expenditures are solid. Our revenues, no matter what, they're going to be an estimate.
Is this more typical than not? This is how you.
Your revenues will always be a projection. Your expenditures will always be solid numbers. Your rollover amounts will always be a best guess.
But thanks for your.
Uh, next year, hopefully when we're going through this process, our rollover amounts will be much more clear at this point in time. Um, unfortunately, I came at the very beginning of budget and I didn't get to solidify a lot of things in the way I would like to with this process. Um, but your expenditures are a set number.
As meaning we won't, our intent is not to go over those expenditures. We may come in lower, which is always our hope that something will cost less, which is what I meant by the best guess. But correct, we, the expenditures, we should, we should not go over in the revenues. We can only hope we go above.
Any, any questions for Karen?
I think I understood her question a little bit more because she had also asked this to me and I helped her to bring this public comment. Um, I think she's talking about twenty twenty-one actuals and planning for moving forward since we didn't have the twenty twenty-one actual. I understand she was concerned about moving forward into a twenty twenty-three with twenty twenty-two and that's, I think.
Our twenty twenty-one are considered in a preliminary final status only because we have not been filed. I told our internal financial statement today, had you been reviewing it. So we do have those numbers. Um, we have built that into our twenty twenty-two actuals because I've had um, our financial consultant working on reconciliation, they noticed some errors based off the audit versus what was in our system. So that's all been fixed. So we're not going off of extremely incorrect data. It's just not closed out. We think it hasn't been filed. And I think that might have been the question.
Okay, yeah.
I like.
Yes, I would like to turn back to.
I'm so sure I'll explain it how I meant it to put out. But also I was talking about in that actual work session. Um, like I'll give you two examples. Um, Wigan from the town and Bob from the town were asking these times about different numbers when they said we don't have the actuals. And that came from different departments throughout that meeting that I attended of your work session for the budgeting, that they said we don't have the actuals yet. And so that's what I'm pointing out. It's a concern in moving forward. And that stuff hasn't been finalized and they still don't have the actual numbers and that's really concerning. Thank you.
Can you press that all, Sharon?
We have actual numbers.
Yeah, they're just not finalized. We haven't been on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Excuse me. So we also have, uh, Sergeant Cherry, kind of explained a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I love it. No, I'm sorry. What, what question did you have of me specifically?
I'd just like to see, you know, what you guys represented. I know we were looking at bringing on two. And it shouldn't be a problem bringing it on midstream. Like I said, if we do have budget at that point, or if we really have something impacting the town, we can change fairly quick. How, how fast do you guys move?
Yeah, it's funny you ask that, uh, because I had a conversation with my lieutenant, uh, this afternoon. And, uh, even if you said absolutely on January first, we're going to be able to find a corporal position. Who probably wouldn't be able to get a deputy or a corporal, um, do the, do the process to select that person, get them trained up and try to play them mid next year anyway. Um, so that would work and, uh, as I told board last time that I was here, that we're going to go forward with moving some positions around, we're going to create the midnight deputies so that we have that twenty-four hour coverage. Um, the, the current corporal, we can do that. Let's, they'll just kind of float between the two shifts to offer some of that coverage. Um, ultimately, we're not going to have the coverage that we want. That's why the second. Ultimately, we're not gonna have the coverage that we want, that's why the second corporal would be hugely beneficial. Um, for the overlaps between, uh, the swing shift and the midnight deputy. Um, but we can, we can make do and. As we always do. Uh, as far as the other position. That position is, is a, is a, is a want, it's not really a need, at least in my opinion right now. I'd love to be able to have that extra person, like a life bad, add twenty extra people up here, but, um. That would be nice to have the corporal, second corporal position is something that we see. Is the town hall building big enough for you guys? Absolutely, it could be a, a great place for us.
Does it need a lot of refurbishing?
I don't know.
Let's just say we may need a paint day and if anybody installed carpet, we might need that as well, we'll see. We're gonna go in and take a look at it. Staff has talked about me, he said, go and clean it out anyway, so we'll go and take a look and see what it needs.
I have a lot of ruddy clothes, I'll be happy to help.
Um, I know there were a lot of issues with radios inside the gimmicks. Have some same issue in the town hall and if so, can we move some of the equipment from the annex to town hall? That have like a repeater or anything.
Yeah, the information I had regarding that is that we get some sort of repeater or booster to boost that signal a little bit. Uh, I know that that has been a problem. I'm not for sure on, on whether radio situation is in our current, so then situ, the radio's been great. Um, but, um, we'll make it work. Thank you for all the tuning, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Well, we all agree to this draft a new four. Yeah, I mean, like I said, the only thing that I would like to see is still to do is make it balance. Um, but I think obviously we have the budget demands next week, so we can get more public input from there. Um, and if there are any adjustments or things we can make, we can do that. Um, but. We address the. Um, so she brought up the position of the bells, so it sounds like we can hold off on those, which is good. I think that was really the order of house things I had, it's just, I don't know, it's just.
I have just one additional thing, um, from my comment question before, when I had mentioned about the water, I was not discussing. Water rates increasing, my understanding is that the numbers we went pop up. We didn't see that rate increase in our water rate until April on our billing. So we're going off previous rates that were set at a lower rate. The rates coming up that we have. That will come with those rate increases when they started in April, is that correct? Guys, so that has nothing to do with rates increasing in my comment, what we did is we accounted for the first quarter when we were planning. The budget, correct?
That's the fund bounds that I went off of.
Got it.
Sure we were adhering to our policy. Um, so our revenue changes, I don't know if that's going to look like as of yet. But the numbers we're basing the budget off of is what we have to charge for rates we have a solid and.
Perfect, that was all I was clarifying again, because that was the case and I didn't understand that, then I was lost and I needed to go back to. The beginning, so it did not account for our increase that came in April. Perfect.
I have a few items, I know that rate increase was just mentioned again, just so everyone is aware, those rates have not have been improved for this quarter as of yet, so nothing is solid. Um, and based on if you were there to attend a working session, we reviewed some projections that actually include people's rates going down. So, uh, I do want to be very cautious of the rate increase, blanket statement again, because. That for one, we haven't improved and it's not necessarily the case for all residents. So I wanted to make that clear. The other piece that I wanted to mention is the comment regarding economic development. I think it is the board's charge to prioritize economic development. And I think that was a very good point that we received from the public. But at the same time, not but additionally. At the same time, I want to make it very abundantly clear that the public care and listening and. Please share this information with everyone you know and love and. Make sure that they're aware. When we talk about sales tax revenue, the largest revenue of our town, that's the most money that we get from anywhere. Um, that comes from our sales tax, so when you. Uh, when you go to businesses in Wellington. And you get services or buy products, that's where the sales tax comes back to. That is the primary place where we get sales tax. So a big part of improving the quality of life and economic development. All these kind of things is what this board, you know, essentially would do to help people and encourage them to spend their money here. Because that's actually what then funds our town. So when we're talking about security with L T S O. When we're talking about roads and we're talking about parks. Every single person in this room and in the town of Wellington contributes how much we can, how much revenue we got. So your choices of where you buy groceries, where you buy gas, where you get your massages and your nails done. All of those decisions are what fund our town and the security again that we talked about up here. And if that is a priority of people in Wellington, you have a direct impact on making sure that we need those. By one, that's so, so clear for everyone. Um, and again, it's our charge to see if we can help facilitate that in better ways. Um, and the other thing is every household that comes to Wellington, every household is a, a sales tax revenue. Now that we get, um, sales tax back from any online order. Every single home, new home, new building, new multifamily, anything, it's additional sales tax for the town. Every rooftop means sales tax. Not only because those people are spending their money in Wellington, but because they're ordering products to their home. So, um, I just want to make that super clear and I, I hope that, you know, we're gonna do everything we can within our limitations to help facilitate it. Um, and there's no question as to what our motivation is to make Wellington matter, but it is also the charge of every resident of Wellington. So thank you guys for your comments, I wanted that.
Alright, we're all set on that one?
Oh, next, next opportunity for public comment is that, uh, well, anytime, you can always contact board, of course. Through website, contact everybody on the board. Um, is the budget demands on the eighteenth. First hundred people get free pumpkin, it's super fun, very well done, great presentation, an opportunity for the. Public to really dive deep into every single one of our budgets. And learn about what's going on, if you want to know what's going on from the town of Wellington for every project we're doing, that's where to go and you'll learn.
Okay, uh, next presentation will be related to the Main Street exploratory committee. And I want to thank our two board member proceeds.
Good evening.
Yes, do I need to?
Yeah, you're good.
Alright, perfect, thank you. So just as a quick reminder, back at the end of July, I came before you. As trustees and provided a presentation from the Main Street Board. Asking for an exploratory committee to be put together to help us clarify and really work on. Securing the future of the Main Streets program that we've had here since twenty fourteen. And in doing so, we did have, um, trustee vegan, trustee Bailey, Kelly Bowery, myself and Matt Ashby with Ayers Associates on that committee. We spent the last couple of months, boy, I work in. A lot, working hard is a, a short way to say it, an easy way to say it, but. We have spent time together, we have, um, ripped apart budgets. We have explored other communities that have similar programs, other communities that have. Exact same programs, the Main Street program as a nonprofit and, um. In a community and how they're structured. And we really truly evaluated that, those structures and those other communities. Um, we also looked at other communities that. Have had nonprofits and how those were managed. So not necessarily just within a Main Streets perspective. We. And I, we ripped apart job descriptions. And analyzed and evaluated every component that goes into managing a Main Streets program. And what is re- really necessary and also what is required. Because we are a program underneath the state of Colorado's Department of Global Affairs, um, Main Street program. And through that. And that time together, we are coming to today to share that we did come up with a resolution that we are bringing to you. And that resolution is to strengthen the partnership between the town of Wellington and the Main Streets program. And we're doing so in asking that the town of Wellington, um. The program management duties and responsibilities for the Main Street program have under there. And that we would retain a nonprofit board independently. But with, uh, representation of courses from the identified individual through the town. And also we, um. Invite a non-voting trustee to be a member of that board as well, but those are some further details along that we can get into. In doing all of this, we really wanted to present to you tonight, what are some of these benefits that we're gonna bring back and why is this, why was this the best? Route for us to move forward with. And the first item that I want to bring up is that in a. Real kind of global perspective, we identified just right off the top of the back over forty thousand dollars in savings to the town. Through this process. And. And that's not getting into the nitty gritty, that was just, just right off the top, just a couple of i- items that we can identify. Rent savings, staff costs, some insurance costs and a few other items that. Um, we have. We also. And I'm sharing this just because it was fun and through all of this stress made us all laugh. We have identified, um. What we're calling the tiered avocado. I'll kind of show a picture if anybody's interested. Um. The tiered avocado. What this means is that through this enhanced partnership, what we would be able to do is. At the Main Streets program and as a town, it offers a suite of services to our business. Currently, the Main Street program is limited in the services and, uh, programs that we can provide. Because we are an identified district. Just as a D D A would be an identified district, the Main Streets program is, and we have boundaries that we can only offer those programs and services to. But through an enhanced partnership with the town, we can offer, we can expand those benefits and services in a tiered situation. So for example, we currently have a sign and oning grant, so any business that is within our boundaries, you can off, we are offering. A thousand dollar match. On, uh, signs or onings for businesses. We through August have funded three through the end of September, three additional and through the month of October, looks like we'll have two more. That we will be funding, so that's total of seven thousand dollars that we've given back this year from funds that were raised in twenty twenty one. With this in, um, tiered approach or avocado approach, and it was truly just a scribble on a piece of paper one day. That kind of dropped this all together, we would still have our district area that we would offer our main level of services to. And then everything outside of that, we would be. Be able to offer, uh, another level of service to. So for example, the sign grant now where we're offering a thousand dollars to those inside our district. Those that are outside our district and, uh, inside of town limits, maybe we would offer them five hundred or seven fifty. Depending on kind of where the budget for that, that, um, specific project might land. So that was an enhanced benefit that we thought would really be exciting for everybody, not just those in our program because we have. Personally internally struggled that we can only offer here and not else outside. In addition, um. Some of the key points to this is that we would not make a change to the structure of the Main Street Board. So we would still be maintaining an independent nonprofit board to manage that nonprofit program. Um. The nonprofit piece, while, while that board then is working cohesively with that program manager component through the town. Um, so then, any of those nonprofit things that, that we as a nonprofit do. Are the ability to provide funds back through, um, programs and services, the ability to, um, apply for and receive grants. We would still have that flexibility to do so. And that brings us to the next point of, um, by maintaining this, through this, um. Relationship, we're also gonna continue, we're not gonna lose that ability to access additional grant funding. Whether it's through Dola's Main Street program or through additional avenues that we've seen over the last couple of years, such as our C dot grants. And, um, we really truly believe that this partnership is just gonna show an additional. Fantastic collaboration. Between these two entities, between the town and the Main Street program. For all of our residents and show that, you know, we working together towards a, a similar goal here for our community. We also looked at some additional benefits above and beyond that, we, we. I know that you have a memo here that, uh, Ms. Long and I, uh, she prepared that, but we worked on together to kind of talk about some of these other pieces that. Would, we'd be bringing to the community, would be really increasing that volunteer base. Um, we have a database of. About a hundred and fifty individuals that we call on for volunteering, so, um, now. That really become a very robust volunteer. Option for our community as a whole. Um, and think that there would, might provide some clarity into about who and what the Main Streets program is and what we do in our community. There's been a lot of confusion on that and I think this collaboration will really help bring that together, that this is. The Main Streets program is not just a, a have fun event program, that this, we're really here to promote and enhance our community. And bring people here and keep them here, and to trustee Bailey's point. The, the more we as individuals, we as residents. Spend our dollars here, the more our friends and family from out of town come and spend their dollars here, the better a community that we have as a whole. I could talk and wax, quote, about the Main Street program for hours on end, so I'm going to stop there. Uh, which is one final comment. Um. Dan, or you're a town attorney and I apologize, Dan, I can never pronounce your last name, so I'm just gonna go with Dan right now. And, and, um, our representative Gail Ling and Bola are working collaboratively to finalize a memory and a little. Understanding that would really bring this partnership together that we will be bringing to you and to, that's your next trustee. That we would like for you to review and, and look forward on at that time, but for tonight. I wanted to share with you where we come, see if you have any additional questions for myself. Kelly, um. We, the trustee vegan or trustee Bailey as we.
I have a lot of questions. Um, so my main concerning question is, is in reading some of this, and I know I've had a. Conversation with another trustee about this earlier today, just in passing. Um, I'm concerned that when one entity asks to have a partial absorption into our town. And they ask to be exempt from the rules of being absorbed in the town, that's something that. I seem to be struggling with a little, I need to seek further clarification on some of that. Um, but it was a generalized question that it came up about the brew fest that you guys posed. The question and conversation had come up that in our town ordinances. We are to support nonprofits, that's any nonprofit that comes in, that they want to host an event here, we partnership with them for free financing stuff and stuff like that. My concern is, is with that, as part of our ordinance, it states. That there, there can't be a disclusion pretty much of people. So when the brew fest sets a twenty one and over age, that's like the restriction. So when the Brew Fest sets a twenty-one and over age, that's such a restriction and goes against our ordinance. So those kind of things are just things that I'm trying to find out on our side of things, kind of, if we.
Yeah.
I may have a little clarification that I take either by them.
I would know that. They have seven years of.
It took me a while.
By practice to practice and always come out.
Her handle to my office and wanting to sell it out on the firm, and that's right. Um, I think what you're referring to is the um. It's, it's the, it's a resolution with the fee schedule that talks about um opportunity or. The ability of town staff to waive certain fees and other things, the requirement of that is that we fees not be waived or anything that's not. We that the, the exact language is open to the public. Um. And usually in that sort of language, the way I would interpret that. Would be that's saying we cannot waive fees for items that are private. But a public, a Brew Fest, even if it has an age restriction, I would still interpret that as a public. And and I think that would be intent of the board, so, and it is just a resolution, so I think. I, I would love to talk more about it, and then without further ado, getting that readdressed in that question earlier, but I was kind of looking. Um. If, if it were the intent of the board to not waive fees for, for events that were twenty-one and up, we could do that. But I think the language that revolution. I think in, in my interpretation and certainly in interpretation of. Brian March, who was the town attorney when that was drafted, and I think also the interpretation of the board when it was adopted, uh was. Brew Fest would be in public, so I, I don't know if that is a violation, but that would be my understanding.
Right, and that's the kind of items that I was seeking clarity on is, are you going to be planning events that have restrictions? I guess is my, my main out of all of that, my main, but I didn't want it to come across mean, accusatory or anything.
So I want to be really, I, I need to clarify something just right up front. Um, there are three events that. In the last several years, um, people have, have lost some clarity on. Believe that they are Main Street events. These are the Old Colorado Brewing Company point five K Fun Run. The Wellington Brew Fest. And uh effective in twenty twenty-two, brand new event was the Soul Square Happy Go Lucky Five K. Those are not Wellington Main Street events. Wellington Main Streets Program was passed by each one of those events. Um. Organizers. If we would carry the permit because there was alcohol involved. Um each one of those. And in order to, and to following state. County, local liquor laws, the nonprofit had to hold the permit. In order for those events to be held in a public park. Now, this year, twenty twenty-two, we did not have a permit for the point five K because it was not held in St. Finnell Park. Whereas the other two events were, that there was access through those public areas, so we held the permits on those two events. In doing so, we were offered um. To be the beneficiary of the proceeds from those events, so those were not proceeds to make money for any reason other than. Um. Give back to the Main Streets Program, so the Main Streets Program then utilizes those funds, and I can get to that in just a moment, but um. It was not for those organizers to make a profit off of those events, it was. Promotion for their individual businesses in the Brew Fest or a multitude of brewers throughout Northern Colorado. And again, then we held the permits for those. Those that permit request could have gone to any other nonprofit within the community. And back this year, some of those permit requests, there was discussion, should we have a different nonprofit hold this? Hold this permit for us. Um, the Wellington Main Street Program was fortunate enough that we were selected because then we did receive proceeds this year. I don't. I don't have the exact dollar amount in front of me, but it's somewhere around fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. That we received in donations from those three events in twenty twenty-two, I'm probably off about nineteen bucks, I don't, I'm somewhere in there. Right under sixteen thousand dollars. Um. So we, as, as a program. Do not plan or hold any events that are exclusory in any way. Um, and I, and I recognize the question. I have a little child with multiple disabilities. Can't attend a lot of these, right? Can't participate. Um, can't access them. Um, yeah, so, I mean, just from that perspective alone, but that is not what the Main Streets Program does, that's not who we are, that's not what we stand for. Any perception that a Brew Fest is exclusive, uh. Exclusory. I don't think it was any different than, in my opinion, uh. Can't have somebody under twenty-one at the bar after certain hour either, so there wasn't any intention there for it to be, to exclude anybody from my. From my point of view and where we can speak.
But, so yeah, that was just my kind of understanding is, I just want to make sure that if we're utilizing taxpayer dollars. That we are not utilizing taxpayer dollars and then saying, but your kids can attend. So, and that's just one thing I was trying to make sure that we were avoiding. Um, and separating that out was a concern, because I think a lot of the concern that has been brought back to me. As even before I was trustee, is we are investing in events that. The taxpayer dollars help pay for, but they have to pay to attend the event. So it's kind of one of those catch twenty-twos where they're like, well, you just used our taxpayer dollars. And we spend, what, I want to say it was eighty-two thousand in total possibly on Main Streets. And people are paying to attend these events after taxpayer dollars were utilized. So that was one of those questions, comments, concerns that come up to me on a pretty regular basis. I get the sponsorship funds coming in, I've helped with multiple nonprofits. Um, but none that have received taxpayer dollars to help support the nonprofit. So that's where I kind of been stuck in that.
Again, I just want to really, I just need to clarify that those events are not Main Street events, but so. Um, in speaking strictly to the Main Street events, right, I, I think, I can only speak as a permit holder for those events. Uh, but strictly speaking from Main Streets as the Main Streets Program, the events that we have held. Have been along the lines of. Um, the farmer's market, Wellarama, um, what, trigger tree, Halloween trigger treats coming up, October thirty-first, I hope y'all come to theater. Um, um, this last year, we did a Cleveland crawl in January. Um. That there's no fee to attend the farmer's market. There's no fee to attend, there was one fee, I think a five dollar fee to attend Wellarama in twenty twenty-one. We were limiting our attendees, trying to complete, uh comply with COVID regulations. And um needed a, a specific count of individuals because we have space and um county health. Uh guidelines to, to follow up.
Hmm.
So it was a minimal dollar amount to. To really, really more than anything reserve a space so that way we were in compliance. So I, I don't know if that helps answer that question for you, trustee Tietz. Um, there, there is a separation, even though it doesn't. Being like it, that's why, that we've had some clarity issues over the years on those couple of events that, that do charge ticket prices.
Hmm, well, in the Cleveland crawl, there was a price.
There was a price on the Cleveland crawl, correct? And that was a new event for twenty twenty-two. And that was to uh really try to be a fundraiser for our program, and everything we do is to raise funds for that program so. We could go, go towards that uh goal of self-sufficiency. And um anybody that's running nonprofit understands that that is a long-term, long-reaching goal. That does not happen in the first five years, doesn't happen in the first ten years, there are big donors. That help support you in that area, that's why we're here today. Because we're, we've come to terms and we've recognized and over the years have done so, such great things here. Who said, yeah, we'd really like to do this partnership.
Awesome. My other thing was the insurance costs.
Hmm.
So will we, will be absorbing is the proposal that the town pays for Main Street's insurance cost?
So um right now, we carry multiple insurance, so we carry a general liability insurance, we carry a nonprofit board insurance. I'm sure similar to what you have as well for your board. Different nonprofit, uh, we have workers' comp insurance, we have um. And then you know your normal tax insurance with your unemployment. Um. This partnership, it would be our understanding that. The nonprofit board would no longer need a workers' compensation policy, we would no longer have an employee. Um, uh, we would not necessarily need a general liability policy as the nonprofit side. Because the program manager and the program duty and responsibilities would be covered under the um town. Those are all details that I'm still trying to work out in those individual components. But that the nonprofit board would still maintain a nonprofit board liability insurance policy. I think that's exactly, um. And we carry that through a State Farm agency in Fort Collins and have since inception in twenty fourteen.
So that's my concern is increasing costs on town side when we're.
Will be decreasing by forty thousand off the bat.
Right, for as far as what we spend investing in and employee for Main Streets. Right, so that's kind of my concern is we'll be increasing costs. For our town when we're cutting so much stuff out of our budget right now. So that, that's just some of, some of my kind of concerns, things I completely and happily support. I volunteered for Main Street, so I helped with Market last year, it was a blast. But I'm, mine comes from, we have all these scary conversations that we're drastically cutting budgets and stuff like that. So I just want to make sure when we are looking at doing this, I'm all for supporting all businesses here in town. Um. It's just a concern of mine that we are decreasing. Our budget so much, just that's a, a main concern of mine.
Good. Um, good evening, uh, I think the question is regarding the town's property and casualty insurance, and if you will be seeing an increase if we in-house nature, is that correct?
Hmm, yes.
And that, it would not change, we, the town are in, puts on events, there's no change to our policy, we're fully covered under that, so it's, it doesn't increase per. For time you have like a Halloween event or something like that, so there would be no change to the town property and casualty insurance, and that's currently included in the twenty twenty-three budget.
This is general, so the workers' comp side of it.
We currently have a position for the community and business liaison, uh, we're included, and that's what the proposal is. Is to, that position is currently vacant, and so we would take the position and fifty percent would be dedicated to the town. And then leaves that we have there, which would be um business licensing, uh, events in general, um, CAC administration. And then the other fifty percent of the job, like um Ms. Hardy mentioned, it would be for a Main Street Program Manager. So that is currently a position that is included in your budget um within this year's budget and proposed for next year's budget.
Okay, then, yep, so that been canceled out that cost, thank you.
Thank you, I couldn't speak to those.
No, it's, you're totally fine.
Mayor, my, my, I even ask that it is open for some dialogue to be for.
Yeah.
Uh, because, you know, I, I served on this committee, so I do have some input, I mean, from a. From that perspective, it will run in terms of the Main Street Program, and I don't want it to be taken as a. Um, does he interrupting anybody for more that I have input, but I, that's valuable that I love. But I just want to make sure that that's taken that way, if you raise my hand or have any kind of.
Great, I, yeah, I, that's my question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, that, I, I understood that because I've had many conversations with Ms. Garcia about this, so, but that was not. Spelled out that we were changing the one position in, in the most, already pointed, calling that out, but I think addressed a lot of that. Um, just a couple of questions that I have, I know the past Main Street Director, then your employee, with the transition that being a town position. That person would now, obviously they would get some direction from Main Street Board, but they would report to. Ms. Garcia or Ms. Whollinger, someone in town staff, it would not longer be a direct report to the Main Street Board, is that correct?
Correct, correct, and um. While we're still working on that MOU, we're still working on those. Final detail, I think of the, the position description that we'll be bringing into weeks that can really identify that, but that has definitely been a point of conversation for us. And how do we manage that management fee? And um I, I come here tonight to tell you that. The Main Street Board has discussed this, we, we've gone through it, we've evaluated, we were looking at that and unanimously agreed. And understood and agreed that that program manager would be a town. Person, town staff person, town, somebody at the town. And that while we would have guidance in the program direction. We would not, we would no longer be acting as their employer, and so would not have that direct. Input into their day-to-day operations of their role. If there was ever an issue or a concern, then the president of the board at that time. Would then be able to have direct conversations either with, with Stevie that's been appointed to that. Um, nonprofit board or that individual supervisor.
Um, and then the second question I had is, I know, um, I think the person with savings come in is obviously in the past, we funded the Main Streets Program for roughly eighty thousand ish. Um, a year. My understanding is that that portion would go away in terms of an ask from the Main Street for the town providing money to Main Street. And then what we would be doing is taking an existing position, saying, hey, roughly half of this would then be running Main Street Program, is that a correct understanding?
That is a correct understanding that um typically I stand here during a little off over. And present to you our work plan for the next year and present and ask to be put into your annual budget for um. That funding for us, we would no longer be doing that. Um, as part of our boards, our Main Street Boards um review and approval of what is in force or a community, we also developed. Agreed unanimously on a budget specifically for the nonprofit board, and then they're not including any funds. From the town or municipal support. Those funds are specifically going to come from those fundraising efforts that we put into, our efforts into. Such as Cleveland crawl, the market, Wellarama, and hopefully continued um. Income as the beneficiary for some of these other events that are held up. And we've identified also. Uh. How that, what those expenses will be and how the, then those dollars will be reinvested back.
No, I, I think it's great, I'd, I'd like to see it, hopefully in two weeks it'll be more spelled out, so it's very clear as to what exactly we're doing. I think the general idea that's been presented. But Dan gets to have a lot of fun, so. But no, it's exciting to see, I know this is an idea that I had approached some of my colleagues back in May and June, and. We talked about it at CML, and it was great, have you guys been through talking to us in July, that your board had been talking about this? Um, so I'm very hopeful they'll, they can work, I think it'll be a good balance of being able to continue working alongside Main Street, help support that economic development. But also be able to work within kind of restrictions of our budget and also not being in a place where we're putting a ton of money directly into one. Nonprofit where, hey, we're working alongside a nonprofit with that staff working with them, but it's a different story than actually running trust up, so.
Yeah, exactly, there's a, there's a perception from partners in there, and um I, I can honestly say from our board's perspective. Um, our biggest concern is that this program and the benefit it does, however we get there, we don't want to lose it.
Agreed.
So.
Um, I don't think I've got.
Um, I don't think I've got any real questions, I mean, obviously your guys' contributes, contribution back as well has been extraordinary as far as that goes, and I think that's why we're here considering this MOU. Um, Dan, I really appreciate your clarity on the resolution eleven that twenty nineteen. I did actually talk to the former mayor today, and it was also his understanding that the uh, the piece about uh, the piece that, of events not open to the public, meaning that that events, those, both events are still open to the public, but the, the, the decoupling, I'm the idea from uh, what a age restriction is on event from uh, what it is to have something that is open to the public, to the public. So I, I think those are, at least from my understanding, different when it comes to a legal perspective, and I, I think that was the intent of the prior board, so I just want to make that throw that out there.
Yeah, one thing I really like about this uh, setup that we've got to go in here is the position that we're putting in there, not only is it working with Main Street, but it's working on the economic development in the town. So, you know, it should be, we're getting a hundred percent, or I mean, if it isn't for Main Street, it's for the rest of the town, for economic development. You know, this thing has expanded, and that's one thing that we were definitely working at. Uh, the way we just having the town and the Main Street people only. So now we're very inclusive with the whole town, and hopefully that should, you know, I, I think brings some very positive responses from everything that we do and really get everybody inclusive in, so appreciate what you've done.
Justin McDonald is still on the line?
Yeah, Mayor Proden McDonald.
Thank you so much, thank you so much for your presentation, Anita, that was fantastic. I did a little bit of research about how other communities um, fund economic development programs, Main Street programs and chambers, and a lot of them will contribute and dedicate up to three percent of their sales tax revenue annually. I think that what the town has put together and what Anita and the Main Street program is proposing is a tremendous rate of return on what we get. The impact that these events have on the community through generating extra sales tax is enormous, because people don't just attend those events. They go to the restaurants, they buy gas, they stop and buy Band-Aids. There's a huge ripple effect that comes from investing in partnering and collaborating with programs like the Main Street Group. So for this ask and what's being put together, I think it's a great solution, I'm very impressed with what um, the two working trustees and with what Anita's put together.
Thank you, that's good.
Actually, uh, trustee, oh my gosh. Um, I think that's a really good point to bring up regarding the percentage sales tax. You know, even Windsor does something like that to, to start up their BBA, I think that's been incredibly successful for economic development in Windsor. So I think those are great, great ideas, that's much more expensive, but I, I, I think that is a good thing to point out. Um, the other thing I did want to mention is it's, it's a very thorough um, and complete proposal that is going to be coming to us. And I think that's why, of course, that we need the actual time, so in addition to the MOUs between Dole and the town, between um, us and the Main Street Program, we also worked very diligently on a, on a diagram that essentially says who's responsible for what, and it's down to a very specific tab, or requirements from Dole and everything. It's like five pages of ten points, and who's responsible, who's accountable for those items? Who has to be consulted either legally or, you know, just out of good nature should be consulted. And who needs to be informed for every single one of the tasks? So, um, and then those kind of items at more summary level are built into the MOU. So it's defined, and that way we can operate on this agreement that everybody has an idea of who's doing what and why and how. Um, so that is the, the total package proposal that's going to be coming to us, including, you know, how, how our teams organized from staffing perspective. Um, but of course, those items have to be worked through before we can. So, um, and then of course, thank you for the many, many hours, um, trusting beginning, I attend meetings. But outside of meetings, with constant homework done specifically by um, Kelly and Anita extensively. And also through the Main Street's uh, professional or consulting and professional development that they hired out to help us with this process, so they've contributed financially to come with this proposal. I don't know if that's been clear, so I want to make sure that I'm known. Um, the other item I did want to mention earlier is that many, they support many events and many ornamentations for the Main Street program, but don't necessarily, they're not there that so. And that's the very, Rufus is not the first time I've heard this, it is, it's out there all the time, and the Rufus um organizers are always like, hey, 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 that means you're, so it, it's a, it's a known um, misunderstanding. Um, something else I kind of want to put into perspective is that during this time where we cut a Main Street manager position who town closed him, and then we had, you know, concerns, or sorry, when we cut economic development management, manager, I'm sorry, I'm saying all the wrong words. Um, from our staffing, uh, we didn't replace that position. Uh, we potentially were going to use professional services and, you know, that kind of thing, but we cut that specific rule. Now, I'm not saying the town doesn't do anything, we do a lot for a money department, um, so a lot lay on top of that. But um, given that we have it invested in economic development in a growing town that has a huge discrepancy of the amount of business offerings to the amount of grants, we've been getting a lot from the Main Street program who have been kind of pulling that position down for us. I know we've been contributing to that, but I don't think we've acknowledged how significant that has been. It's been really easy to monetize the return based on grants received. But the increase of sales tax is nothing that's ever been monetized associated with their program. We talk about around events, and people go shopping and spend money, and even, even when you buy food at a food truck at a Main Street event, that money is also going to self-tap. So that's one thing that's never been quantified as to their contribution, but every single other thing that they do also does that. Um, they contributed to crosswalk safety to planters that create beauty and walkability and are inviting to our businesses. Every single one of those items that are designed and promotion based also increases sales tax, which we're not giving them any credit for in any of these calculations. So I want to make sure you guys know that that's above and beyond that also contributes. Um, something that we haven't talked about is the Main Street America, what they stand for. Those four pillars include economic vitality, design, promotion, and organization. All of which our program does the best at in the entire state of Colorado. So when we're talking about making this program viable in the future, I want everyone to also acknowledge that this is the best program in the entire state. And one of very few graduate programs. Um, and they determined that we were the best, so uh, it's not necessarily just making sure that a Main Street program can go and that we're making sure the best program in the entire state continues to contribute. Um, the next topic I have, um, is throughout this process, we're kind of have a running list of benefits, and we organize those benefits by different groups. Both to the general community of Wellington, to the Main Street program, which will have many benefits by this uh, this organization, as well as the town would receive many benefits. And one of those is this, if we go look back at our avocado, we're specifically talking about grant distribution, right? But I would like to apply this to a lot more than grant distribution. This is best practices, this is consulting with Dole, this is uh, the volunteer management, everything like that, which right now has been restricted to this part. By doing this kind of model, we're not just applying those funds and grants to the larger of Wellington, we're providing that knowledge, skill base, and resources to the entire town of Wellington. So um, every single one of those benefits that we listed will kind of fall within the category. And I think that is majority of my notes from what I was hearing people talk.
Yeah, trust me, making constant daily, um, you need to tell you guys a lot of hard work, really appreciate it. I'm really excited to see you guys bring back to us with that MOU. On, on site, so leave it at that. Um, next thing, the last presentation is regarding the Community Activities Commission. This is to follow up, it's going to be in Hall of Fame sixteen, seventeen, for liaison will, um, start with the mission, we can do it right there. Whatever you want.
And you can tell me when you want me to, what the next question is. I'm glad I helped you do that, I need to find out how I'm going through. Okay, so Community Activities Commission, um, this has been actually a topic of conversation between Sean and I, I will have to say probably the two years that he kind of represented CAPE as trustee liaison when I was sitting on the board. Um, previous to that volunteering, when I was volunteering. Um, the history of Community Activities Commission is actually based that we can find is based back to early ordinance. To early ordinances that were set and we can find is nineteen ninety-eight. Um, we know that it has a much deeper history as I really dislike to date myself in age, but I was driving tractor and tractor down in Fourth of July parade in eighty six. Um, so in, it's been referenced in ordinances, the CAC has been historically funded by donations, business sponsorships. Um, town, the town of Wellington has done, survived. CAPE has pretty much partnered with town of Wellington for many years now, before it was donation-based, and in-kind donations. Um, my history with the CAC, so I have been involved, like I said, as a little girl with Community Activities Commission on the participant side of Car Show's, the anti-tractor show. And started volunteering with CAC in twenty sixteen, I was actually brought on by Anita Hardy and Lenny Cankey when I was volunteering with the Chamber of Commerce here. In fact, one of them, right? Um, so it's been an amazing learning experience, a very, a very fun way for our community to get involved in this program. It has been ran differently through the years, depending upon who was sitting as trustee liaison or when we didn't have the town as involved in our planning. Um, we just had town involvement start back in twenty nineteen where we actually had someone attending our meetings. Um, being able to answer questions if we had questions, previous to that, a lot of it was done through an email. If we had questions for the town, um, we did fill out the special event permits. Town did not complete special event permits prior to twenty nineteen. This board can run very successfully with a limited amount of town staff required. It can run very successfully with a board liaison, it does not have to vote at all. That the board liaison just represents what the CAC is looking for. I personally would love to be able to say that as a trustee liaison, I don't vote, I just represent what this commission wants to represent for our town. Um, so being involved through these years, it encouraged me to get more involved with the town, that's why I'm sitting here. So this engagement with our community gets people more involved in our town. It creates a servant generosity that you can't find even when I volunteered with the chamber, even when I volunteered with Main Streets. This is a servant generosity that comes as a resident stepping up and saying, I just want to do good and help host events. That's what these commission members do, there is no expectation, there is no money made, there is nothing gained other than the fact that they are doing good for their community. They don't have to work to push a specific business, they don't have to work to help secure funding for something. Although I would love to see sponsorship packages come into play, um. So I'm, go ahead and. Yeah, so the events. So twenty twenty-two CAC events, it has been a roller coaster in. So, I mean, I'm sure that a lot of people do know the events, but the CAC is responsible for the Easter egg hunt. The town yard sale, two-town cleanups, the Fourth of July Halloween Veterans Day event, tree lighting, and a parade of lights. Um, tree lighting, our participation is the hot cocoa and candies that get handed out. It used to be baked goods, and we decided with how many allergies have come up, that it's better to stay with the candy, the rocks candy names. Um, the partnerships that we've had in twenty-one, twenty-two, this is minimal, this is skinny, um, so Wellington Library, last year, the CAC is the one who funded the LED energy efficient light for the tree lighting, so Roth came to us and asked if he, we had funds we could give to actually donate that money to create the new lighting for the tree, um, trick-or-treat down Main Streets and costume contest. We used to participate in that, and we also helped fund the traffic control that was done through the trick-or-treat down Main Streets. Um, Wellington Main Street's frequent call, we were actually participants in that event, and that was a fun time for us to be able to get out and see the community. Um, Christmas tree down the disposal for all residents, so CAC assisted in the Christmas tree where they ground it up and use it for bark in the spring decor. Um, the monthly townwide cleanups with Jesse and Bean, um, volunteer time and funding. So we help fund the monthly town cleanups here in town and local usage and design partnerships. So I know that for Fourth of July, the Main Street program did utilize the town of Wellington's Fourth of July logo. And that was through agreements that it made everything more cohesive. There's a lot more um, finances. So traditionally, the commission handled much of the planning and implementation of events in-house. And just in the last few years, as I stated, we had started getting much more involved with the town of Wellington. This can be hugely successful with limited town staff time. Um, in twenty nineteen, the town of Wellington started getting more involved with planning and attending with the commission. The commission has historically remained within the allotted budget, if not well under the allocated budget. So twenty twenty-two, we, they had allotted thirty-five thousand, one sixty, which is actually a decrease from the twenty twenty-one budget. In twenty twenty, the commission spent ten thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars to renew all of the events listed, which is huge and proof that these events are volunteer, community, business-based. We pull in so much interest from businesses in the community, our Fourth of July vendor event caters Our Fourth of July vendor event caters to sixty new businesses that come from mostly out of town. To explore what Wellington is about and how their community support is. We want to talk about driving economic development, there is sixty chances for our town, our trustees to shake hands and welcome. New businesses into town, that is huge. The sales tax alone on the Fourth of July before we've had many, many people come and say, I wish you wouldn't have moved this event off Cleveland. Because it's our busiest day of the year, great, that is huge sales tax base. These kind of events, the, the events that the C A C hosts. It's not just about residents, it's not just about businesses, it's about our community. And citizens want to be involved, they want to get involved in these boards. I love it when new people come and sit on the C A C board, they're challenging. But the challenging is not a bad thing, you have to learn to adapt. If you can adapt and learn how to work, even when you're not going along all the time. That should be a function of life. I know we've heard conflict and I know we've heard people question, you know, oh, the C A C is not functioning. It's functioning and it's actually giving amazing results. Out of fifteen thousand people that attend our Fourth of July, we possibly had maybe fifty negative comments. Fifteen thousand people, fifty negative comments. And they were pretty much the standard things, please don't move the event off Cleveland, that's been the norm for pretty much everything. Um, so vision moving forward, so this is my broad scope of what I would really love to see. But I also need our board trustees feedback. Um, this needs to be discussed among our trustees and set into updated ordinances. Because as of now, our ordinances have not been officially updated since nineteen ninety eight. It has created some large conflict and confusion when we have old board members. Sitting on a board used to one set of rules and then being told how a board operates differently. So that bringing it all together and having a standard provision and knowledge of what is required of. Our board or commission and what it should be actually called would be huge and seeing this move forward positive. Um, the commission would set their bylaws and ordinance with the mission and vision statement that best represent. The trustee's mission and vision statement of what they'd like to see with the town. Um, I verified that we do have options related to operations through down at the end of our town attorney. So we do have options on how to make this successful and possibly fall into what's required for our ordinances now. Um, I have the commission support operating under, operating under the bylaws that are current and well laid out. With direction and expectation, because we don't have the direction and expectation in our ordinance or bylaw right now. They actually contribute each other, so. Um, sponsorship proposals, so sorry, business sponsorship and inclusion. Sponsorship packages, individual event sponsorships or annual sponsorships, blanket coverage for all events. Or allowing our businesses a chance to get involved on a small level with a single event at a time. Um, in kind donations, this is our businesses involved in engaging and advertising around our area. So sponsorship proposal ideas I've laid out here and should be general sponsorship packages that you would see. This makes it to where businesses, nonprofits, residents, if they want to get involved. They can donate funds, I have verified with charity that we can put it in a twenty twenty three budget item. So if we are receiving funds from these events, we can specifically place it in that fund and utilize it. So we are not taking more money out of our general fund. Um, this is my most favorite one, and this is the Wellington Middle School High School Work Study Program. This takes a lot of marketing and design requirements off of Mahala with our town. If we can pair with a work study program where this classmate or this class group's. Specific goal is design and marketing through their educational career and into their professional life. This is an awesome opportunity for them to get involved, but also do it as half credit. So they actually qualify, my son did this through the Electrical Apprenticeship Program with Gooder High School. It, there's possibilities to explore nonprofit partnerships, carnivals at events where the nonprofit participating. Can host a carnival on the Fourth of July and actually benefit from that carnival, which means they keep those funds. Where you pay fifty cents to participate in a carnival, like a fair game, they immediately retain that funding coming in. So there is plenty of possibilities, this is stuff that I started exploring with our economic development before she left. And she had some amazing ideas on how the C A C can work with the community for businesses, for nonprofits. Now we have an amazing middle school, high school that can also benefit, but we benefit in the volunteering that comes from it. Um, our volunteer base is typically huge, so we had. Um, let me see, twenty twenty one, C A had, C A B had a high volunteer participation. At our Fourth of July event with over sixty volunteers signed up. We didn't even know what to do with some of them because we didn't have enough jobs for them, I'm not going to complain. But this is stuff that the twenty twenty two C A C had one of the volunteer based Easter egg hunt with over thirty participating volunteers. Lot of these local churches, we welcomed the middle school, high school football team. And they helped us hide all of the eggs, one of the students actually found one of the fifty dollar eggs that was hidden in the gray egg escape. So who was able to get his cash immediately. Um, the Easter egg hunt also saw largest monetary donation, a thousand dollars donated Easter egg basket from a local church. I mean, these are opportunities that we gain because of the relationships C A C has built through the years. This is stuff where I did not know some of my neighbors before and I now know my neighbors. So there is so much opportunity to get super mentioned out of this program. But in conclusion, we really truly need to decide as a board, what we want to see with this C A C commission moving forward. They keep calling it a board because that's what we have called it for so many years. Um, but it's not a board, it is a commission, so it can work advisory, it can work. As an entity of its own with the same kind of requests that we are hearing. Possibly from Main Streets where they are allowed to still operate as their own entity, make their own decisions, but partner or pair. There's oodles of stuff that you can look at with this, but. The main goal in all of this is community involvement and participation. We don't get that on a town level, people don't walk into the town and say, I'd like to sign up for, to volunteer. Volunteers then comes from the connections you make face to face with your community members. It comes from the churches that you attend in your community, the schools you attend in your community. This can be very successful and can also. Decrease in the actual amount of funding we're using from the general fund, but still be a power force here in Wellington.
I'm gonna hold off, Herman.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and from the public comment earlier that what applies here, what I'm hearing. Is this, what we cannot live without when it comes to events. So what we cannot live without the town of Wellington, I wholeheartedly agree with that. If we cannot live without volunteers who contribute to ideas, come on. Uh, we cannot live without community input, we cannot live without involvement and participation from our community. And I, I think I agree with that completely, I think that's. A big part of our town being our town, if that's what the feel of our town and why people love this place, right? So with that said, and, and I really want to make sure that's the understanding of where I'm coming from. I've been attending C A C meetings and I've been approached by a couple of members. Who have specifically asked me. If, if that commission should be dissolved and that they do not feel like they're effective. So with that said, these are the other things that are currently happening with current operations, of course, not with the, the recommendations that we've gone through for the future. So I'm a knowledgeable too, but as of right now, what's going on? Um, and we have an extreme risk associated with the currency A P. Um, and those are related to liabilities. Um, of certain actions that are currently prohibited by that commission. That should not be for, um, serious risk. And those include things associated with contracts, financial and then other items at events with liability. For example, traffic control, um, there's so much actual health and safety concerns with those deal with traffic control. Um, that you know, that is the item that we need to. In my opinion, own and, and be accountable for from the town of Wellington, not necessarily from a volunteer board. Because if something goes wrong, who's liable at this point? So those are my major concerns of what's going on right now. Um, other things that I see with the current operations that I would recommend changes for. If there's a lot of items that come to the C A C that are outside of the scope of what that group does. So for example, a different organization is planning an event. And maybe including the C A C, come to the page. Um, the C A C in this case, a lot of times will need all the details of the entire event. Even though they're just maybe contributing costs, right? And it, it becomes a difficult situation where there's now outside force, which is the C A C. That is in telling other organizations how to do their events. And it's, it's not effective, it takes a long time and the same topics are reviewed week after week after week. Meanwhile, most of the tasks associated with C A C then do land on the town staff. Um, for the items that do have to do with liability and things that, that really need to be living with the staff. In that case, what I've seen. Is based on the requirement of the approval of the C A C. The staff is kind of paralyzed and then they can't move forward in certain items. Which either puts those events at risk and not occurring because they don't meet, um, time. Or, um, other concerns. Um, and it also doesn't allow those staff folks to really be empowered and use their resources that they should be. To, to make that more effective, I've heard conversations lasting up to two hours that could have really been resolved within five minutes. And that, that's a cost of the town because that is staff time that's being utilized during that meeting and then following up over that. So there are certain things within that group, how it's operating and existing that are really outside the scope of them. And I think that we can organize and understand what should be within the scope, what shouldn't be in the scope, in addition to these kind of items. I think we'll be in a better position to be more effective and be safer from the, the concerns of the rest of the town. What I would love to see in the future, and I think which would be that solution that makes us better. Is that we operate in the C A C, which honestly, to avoid confusion, I don't think it should be called the C A C anymore if we're really changing it thus significantly. But rather, we've seen extreme success in two models that we've used recently. The finance committee, which we applaud over and over and over again, and then the resident roundtables associated with sewer and water routes. Those two groups, as they're organized essentially as committees, have been extremely successful. Provide really great feedback to the board and to staff, ask great questions. But the way they're organized is that there are certain items that are within scope of that committee and that are not. Those committees that are tasked with problem solving. Um, for collecting information and, and this idea is all those kind of things that we're talking about that we can't live without. Organizing volunteers, contribution to ideas and ones, community input, involvement, participation in the form of a committee that we've seen very successfully now. So I think if we more formed it as an event committee. And really, to me, like, I'm really passionate about Halloween, but Easter is not my dream. I would love to participate in the Halloween event committee, if that were kind of how it would organize. Um, and then they can always solicit feedback and recommendations that approve. But then at that point, we can really make sure that we're only preventing that committing the items that are within their scope, not the items that are liable, called liability concern. Um, contracts or financial outcomes, which really have to be removed for us just illegally, we cannot include that C A C anymore. So that's kind of how I'm seeing it, I see a lot of inefficiencies currently, but I see so much good and potential. And everything that everybody wants I see as a possibility for two amazing models that we're already using for everything.
Um, yeah, so as Trucky Heeds mentioned, I did serve as the board liaison to the C A C for two years. Um, and there are definitely challenges, I think that you see those challenges within any group of people that work together for a long enough. Um, and what I think that's important about the C A C and I have no problem with working through reorganizing it. I know contracts has been a huge concern in a house, something that even in the two years I was on there. Except for that I'm aware of some golf carts, um, all the items that they were with at all, that month for town staff. So there, there, there were something we were already working on, what I think is important though is that we don't lose. The, really the focus on the events coming to the residents. Because it is different, you know, and it's not saying anything that's definitely brings staff here that does a fantastic job. But you know, having a group of seven different individuals that all bring different aspects and different locks of life from living here in the town. And saying, hey, here are the things that we're hearing from people who are here versus having those decisions just made by. Um, a member of the staff saying, hey, we're into this, we're gonna do that. Now, does that change how we incorporate that into a board of commissioners, maybe there's a way to do that. But I think what's important is that we don't get to a place where it's like, well, when I first said before, we'll just hire a professional that player to come and do it all. The problem with that is maybe that is more efficient, but effective. But we're now removing the community from the community event schedule, there's a lot of great events that you go to that maybe they were really great, but it's not the community feels like it else. And I think that that's one of the things that I saw with the C A C is that the ideas and things that were brought forward by the board members. Were uniquely Wellington ideas, were uniquely Wellington concerns. It wasn't looking at, well, this is the most high powered professional way to do things like this is our town, this is what we're all about, this is our history, this is our character. And I want to make sure that we're careful that we don't lose that.
Absolutely, Don, how would you see that? Like, are, are you along the line with President Daley and the idea of? Like, how, how are you seeing that organized? For, for that, for me.
Sure, and that maybe is just how we put it in their beds. Well, and this is where again, it gets in that dicey territory where we consider a staff is ultimately one side of the contracts. But are we giving staff the override, the C A C says, hey, that's something that's really great, and you're really want some staff that says, no, we don't want it, we're heading out. Um, because if we're taking that out and saying, well, staff is the final say, which I understand the contracts and all of that. But I think we need to be careful that we don't just be, because ultimately, the finance committee, they can give ideas that, but. We make this decision, they, they, they don't have any say over what we do with the budget, they can tell us, tell them blue in the face, do this. We're the ones to make that decision. And I want to make sure that we don't lose that resident engagement with it feeling like, hey, we get to help us gather what our events will look like. So again, I understand the concerns that you're talking about, have no issue with that. And even in my time on the C A C, we're trying to get away from that, right? We were trying to get away from people running out and buying stuff and doing things because we, we got it. And so I, I agree with addressing that, I just want to be careful that we don't make it into something where our, we don't have anyone wanting to be on the C A C. They're like, well, you're just gonna let us sit here and talk, and the staff's gonna do what they want, and you don't actually care what we think. And I think that that's something that is important, we don't lose that, I get it, it's inefficient, I get it's not always the most effective way to do things, but it. That's the, it's, it's our community, it, it's not about efficiency, it's not about effectiveness, it's about we want it. To me, I want our residents being a part of what's being put together. Now, that was even something in our drunk work session where when we talked to the C A C members at the meeting, they both. Have mentioned that we want to see that we are a part of putting this back, we don't want it to be someone on the side saying, here's my idea, we want to help put this together, we want to run this, we want to be engaged and involved. Um, and I want to make sure we don't lose that.
There, I don't, there's not one member of our staff that would ever intentionally say, I, I hear what you're saying, we're absolutely not doing that. I, I want to make sure that, I, I understand your intent and purpose of everything you're saying, uh, trustee Gator, I just want to make sure that we. I I understand your intent and purpose of everything you're saying, uh trustee Gator. I just want to make sure that we. Uh, also communicate our love and understanding that the staff that we have who are public servants, serving our town. Have a best interest for our community, for everyone who lives here. I didn't get that from Tom when we were talking that way, so I just wanted.
Oh, yeah, I I think I started my statement with a break sad.
Yeah.
But I think that we also, we need to understand, because when we're talking about putting down rules and regulations with how it's going to run, it's not about what we have today. Because we're changing rules and haven't changed in.
Since ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, that's probably way too long, but I mean, these are rules that may be around five, ten years in how we structure the CAC. And if we structure it in a way, there may be different people in ten years, a different board, and we end up with no one in the city wants to be on it because they start to feel like, hey. The community doesn't care. And I can't tell you how many times I've heard that in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty is the town doesn't care. We think the town doesn't. Give anything about what we as a community say, there's going to be whatever they want. That has changed a lot in the last few years, and it's been because it's become a priority for the board of trustees, and it's been a priority of our staff. And I think it speaks a lot to our staff and our board that works hard to try and engage the residents and say, no, we want your input, we want your feedback. We want you to be a part of the process, and I just want to make sure that we're careful that we don't. In trying to fix a problem, go too far than sort of committee communicating the opposite. And saying, yeah, we actually don't care about your thoughts on that. So I just want to make sure that we're careful about that and how we look here.
Yeah, I think um with the CAC working with Dan, taking care of the uh. Problems that possibly show up, I think he's uh attacking it properly. And trying to make sure that the city does not have the legality that they're worried about. I think that's going to take care of a lot of the problems that we thought we had, that we could have had definitely. You know, one thing that we do have a very good picture from Main Street is what the. Citizens in the community can bring to the community, the the thoughts, the creativity, everything else. And this is what our CAC staff does too. You know, they can bring in, you know. I'm not that imaginative. You got great people on this board that have been able to. Uh, put on some fantastic events. They have a lot of connections out there. They have the churches out there. They have the different. Different community organizations out there that they can get volunteers from. You widen your fingerprint, your handprint out there. You know, if we just did it within one city person and very limited. That might limit the access to our volunteers too. So we make, we need to make sure that it is inclusive to everybody, you know, what it is, it should be, you know. Every event that we put on, whether it's a Main Street event, whether it's a CAC event. They should learn how to work together, which at times they did not do too good a job, but make it the best possible event. And we need to have with the city, make sure that they communicate together that this is a town. Organization, it's a town event, and let's do it for the best of the town. So we've got to have communication. I think that's an extremely important part for the city to work through, to make sure all the entities out there are working together. Because, and again, you know, it's for the community and and you're looking at.
How would you see it being? How would you see us addressing the issues?
I would say, you know, again, we got the uh economic development person that we're maybe have in here. And, you know, just making sure that all the entities are working together on the different events, you know, like the Fourth of July. I mean, whether it's in one part, the other part, put together, whatever, if we can have a uh cohesive event. So we can maximize everything, whether it's transportation, whether it's food trucks, whether it's whatever, whether it's the. The bare areas. I mean, all of that stuff's important for these events. So we want to make sure that we have whatever it is, that we have a very cohesive event going on. And again, we're looking at tax dollars. That all has a direct impact on tax dollars. So I mean, it might be a little selfish on our part trying to have a great event. But my God, what that would do for the city. And whether it's just uh Fourth of July, whether it's Easter, whether it's Halloween, my God, what that could bring to this year.
Yeah, so I I mean, I guess I'll ask my question differently. How would you see the CAC moving forward? Would you see it along the lines of like a round table?
You know, I think very pretty much what you currently got it right now. You got people, you know, you still got to have, I think, limitations as far as. Contracts, all that type of stuff. They can't overstep the boundaries, but my God, the thought tank, the thing tank that they got there putting the events together. And again, just having creativity out there from the community and getting the more people out there and get to volunteer. Would be make this community unstoppable. Well, again, I think that's it, you know. The committee can be uh a hub. Okay, for ideas plus to take care and follow through the one bits, but you know, as far as. The city, what we have to have for the legality of it, you know, we got to have them too. So it has to work hand in hand.
Sent over to you earlier. I think that document that I had sent over to you earlier pretty much lined it out as most are describing. Where it removes the liability that the town could have. Makes this to where the CAC can be commissioned, can still be involved and engaged, bump plan, implement. But it takes out the contracts. There's not a single person that wanted to do contracts. And we didn't. It got sent and reviewed through the town. We didn't sign a dotted line on the contract. We weren't allowed. So that solved. Now, it was my understanding previously, there was one person that did that and they're no longer sitting on the board. So, but how we've operated the last two years, we don't engage in contract signing. We review bids that come in, um that was suggested that that the town still will be the one screening those. Following the rules and regulations, anti discrimination. If there's huge things that the town has to review in them that we as CAC members just. Do not understand. And even reading, still do not completely understand. We don't do traffic control. We only vote on a bid and make recommendations. We don't sign those contracts. There's no way. We hired traffic control for that reason through those contracts. So, and I think that's what this is, is still running successfully as a commission. Advisory only would really be a disservice if we are only advising the town staff.
Where are you at with getting the CAC into compliance lately?
Well. That's my name, user lock here. Um, so where what I've done so far is, uh, Trustee Keith and I have met at least once. You know, we've talked a number of times on the phone. Um, but in terms of changing the ordinance to. Remove the parts of it that are concerning to me. I'm happy to talk more in depth about those concerns since I know that we'll talk about quite a bit already. In removing the parts of the current ordinance that I think are concerning that, and we're still left with an ordinance that. Doesn't have a lot of, let's say, meat to it. Um, I. I'm not clear on what it means for an entity. To plan and influence events. Is that CAC doesn't have the ability to determine who the vendors are for those events. If the CAC doesn't have the ability to extend funds to make that event happen. I don't know at that, at that point, what it actually would mean to plan or implement. My concern with the CAC's current setup, that contracts have been mentioned at public funds. Currently in the ordinance, it says that the CAC has the authority to enter in contracts on behalf of the town with consultants and all sorts of folks. And while I I agree, CAC has not been signing contracts, but the CAC has been voting on contracts. The CAC has been voting to approve vendors, has been approving uh traffic services as an example. Uh, traffic service, uh, a traffic control service company presented a bid and the CAC voted to approve that service. That's approving the contract. Now, the CAC doesn't have the authority to enter a contract on behalf of its town. So the CAC didn't sign it, but if the CAC voted on it. Certainly, they, the CAC believed it had the ability to operate that contract. My other concern with finance is the town has a very thorough purchasing policy. That was just provided by the Board of Trustees a month ago or two months ago. And that purchasing policy is in place for a very particular reason. That's to make sure the taxpayer funds are extended legally pursuant to. Local, state, and federal law. It's to ensure the taxpayer funds are um not used in a way to benefit individuals. They're used for the benefit of the town. That's the purpose of that purchasing policy. But one of the first things in that purchasing policy is it says, only town employees. With supervisor's authorization, they purchase using town funds. And so the CAC has a process where they authorize reimbursements. They vote on individual expenditures that. That violates our town policy. And so if you remove that, and this is, this is where I keep getting that, if you remove. The CAC making decisions on individual expenditures. If you remove the CAC making decisions on individual sort of contracts. Okay, what is it left here? What is it doing? What is the role of this entity? To plan and influence if it can't make the decisions to plan and influence? And that's where I'm having trouble. So you ask, you know, the question is, where are we? And this is where I I I've been having a lot of back and forth with Trustee Keith is where we are is I have taken the current ordinance. And grew a bit, lined over a whole bunch of it with a red marker, to say, not that, not that, not that. But I'm I'm not sure what's what it's not. What I need is some guidance and and the the board's made decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Sapienza. That that was fantastic. Um. I'm tempted to read my trustee resume and share my experience with the CAC, but I'm not going to do that. Um. I do think that it is really important that we focus on problem solving the situation. And what Mr. Sapienza brought to light was that we are putting ourselves at significant financial risk. And I think what we need to decide is. Should the CAC be responsible for decisions like approving contracts? Or should we be looking at the CAC to answer questions like, what is the theme of the Fourth of July this year? Those are the things that I would envision the CAC making decisions on. Nothing that has to do with our budget. Nothing that has to do with providing direction to staff and nothing that has to do with the safety of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I I do think this is a kind of a tough one, and I I don't want to diminish the trustee Gator's remarks earlier. I do believe that. You know, obviously, it's very important that we have resident input on these things and volunteers from uh from our residents as far as that goes. And trustee Gator, I'd just like to ask, have you attended any of the CAC meetings in, uh, let's say, since July? Uh, no, I have not. Trustee Wegan, have you attended any of the CAC meetings since July?
Yes.
How many?
One.
How did it go in your perspective?
Went pretty soon on that one.
Okay. I'm just gonna go ahead and say that I've attended a few of these things, and what I've witnessed is. The current CAC board from an event planning perspective, in my opinion, is pretty much dysfunctional. I think that we'd be doing Wellington a far better service by proving the staff into position that was recommended for Main Streets. And allowing that person to then assist with coordinating the existing CAC events, along in course with input from our residents. Perhaps maybe that could be done via the other parts and right advisory board. I'm not sure what that looks like. Uh, and certainly with the help of our amazing community and volunteers, but I don't think. I don't think that dissolving the CAC or anything like that prohibits residents from volunteering. Uh, we've got lots of great organizations. Certainly, we're going to have lots of great organizations that would like to step up. Um, I'm certain that some of these organizations would appreciate the elimination of the CAC due to some of the difficulty that comes with. Your dealing with the current iteration of the board. And, you know, mostly from what I've witnessed, it seems to me that town staff is the one that ultimately are executing on most of the CAC. Asked as far as that goes. And quite frankly, I think maybe we've just outgrown the model, the city making slow. Town staff already has the knowledge to put these events on. We've been doing this stuff for years. So. I think, like I said, what I would like to see personally is that we have that staff position filled. For Main Streets, the other half of that person's time would be dedicating to planning these events. Certainly, again, I would like to see some kind of increased uh way for community, community residents to be able to participate. Because certainly by eliminating the board, we don't want to eliminate options for residents. So I think that's, I think that's what I've got here.
Uh, yeah, and just as a follow up, I, my observations, I've been attending Jordy's CAC meetings recently. Think four or five of them now. Um, and they are not super productive. Um, and there's a lot of. Conflict. And there's completely organizations in town that are willing to work with the town because of the CAC. So I don't want to ignore that either, but I have to come back to the things we can't live without. And I just had Brian Glass and we were talking to this of what Mr. Sapienza was saying as to what does it leave. Right? What what what's left that we is vital and still encompasses community feedback, involvement, participation? And so an activity we did through the Main Streets Committee was, and another committee, I think, was incredibly successful. By the way, that brought great insights and recommendations. Um, what we did is a RACI chart, which I referenced. Earlier, so R, I just looked up how to pronounce it. I didn't know it was RACI, but it's RACI. R is for who's responsible for what. A is for who's accountable. So that's kind of where that liability is, who's accountable, who's liable. Um, C is who's consulted, and I is who's informed. If we broke down every task associated with events, essentially, not just what the CAC does now, but everything that happens according to events that have to happen to be successful. And we designate what can be done, what what has to be done by the town. Liability, no questions asked, have to be done to make sure that we're safe, that residents are safe, and the town is safe of a risk of liability. And we make sure that all those accountable and responsible pieces live with the town, and then we'll see what parts have to be consulted. Consulted, what parts have to be informed, what parts can we make accountable to all of yours, what part can be responsible to all of this? And if we break that down, I think then suddenly we'll have the boundaries that we're wanting. And then then we'll also have the operational direction as to the scope of what they're doing. So I think as as a media, the recommendation of conflict, we could do that initially first. To say, what is actually needed to be done, and how can we make sure we still have the community uh voice, participation, and movement? And then, once we have that shortlist, it's probably still. Once we have that list of their specific tasks, then we can say, what's the best model? And how can we make sure the community is involved? And not just community of the five, seven members who are participating, but how can we reach beyond that and survey the entire town? So, and I I think that will accomplish everything we're trying to do, but without just changing wording and the ordinance. We actually need to change the operation as well. So I think that will help us get the boundaries and understand what's in scope. For all of here.
So what is, what is your thought and direction?
To do a RACI chart, responsibly accountable, consult, inform for all events related tasks. For any of our events. And things like who applies for the event permit would be one of them. Who's responsible for scheduling, fire marshal.
Reorganization of the CAC.
Yeah. Yeah, and then and then whatever's left, then we can determine, you know, that's what the volunteers need to be focusing their time on. That's where they're gonna be staying. And then and then that in that sense, we need to rename it though, because I would hate someone come in and have it operating, thinking that it's operating. It is a different organization, still accomplishing the same goal that we can't look out, but it is different in that we're removing the liability risk. So I I would love, I I know that legally, we can make it work, but that how does it operate? What does it actually accomplish? What are the goals? I think that's what I got.
And trustee Gator, you have?
Yeah, um, several things. So the first one is an idea of a way to move forward. I know in a how we work it all out, but I think this could address some of the concerns that interest me under that. Is instead of it being something where the CAC approves this contract or this contract, they can have that a algorithmic process as we go out and get possible vendors. CAC can say, hey, this is the preferred vendor that we think would be based on what's presented, it's the best choice. Now, staff has the ability to look at the purchasing policy and say this fits or doesn't fit and make a decision. The board basically empowers staff to say, the CAC has given a recommendation, we'd like you to follow that unless there's a problem with down purchasing policy. If there is, you follow the town's purchasing policy and you explain that to the CAC and you have. So the CAC gives a recommendation to staff saying, hey, we think this would be the best fit for what we're trying to accomplish with the events. Staff has the power to look at what is our purchasing policy, how does town work? Now, ideally, in the past, I don't think we've had contracts presented that were outside of that, but that staff is able to make that decision. So CAC is giving a recommendation on this, so we think it should be with budget. We approve budget. The CAC can put together here, but we think it's gonna cost for the events here, we think would be great, that that comes to the board of trustees. It does now, but we don't so much time looking at it, but we then say, we think this is appropriate, we think it's not. And then we say, hey, we're gonna say, yeah, we love your budget, or we're gonna say, no, we're actually gonna change to this, this, and that's our budget. So they give, again, a recommendation on here's what we think should be budgeted for, and here's the events we think should happen. But we as the board are the ones who say yes or no. Staff is the one who is saying yes or no, we're gonna spend the money here or there. There are not reimbursements, and that's something that I made very clear when I was that we need to get away from that. Not be gone. It's like if you need something, you need to talk to staff. You don't go buy it yourself and then oh, give me money back. I know people still do it, but I agree, you don't, don't go expecting to get reimbursed. Um, and I think that would address some of those issues. So I think that that does give us a solution that allows us to operate where they're not entering into contracts, they're giving a recommendation. And again, our expectation is we'd like to follow that recommendation unless town staff feels, hey, this is gonna put the town at risk for the stuff of policy, purchasing policy, whatever. As long as they've got a reason for why we're saying this is a good fit, staff ultimately just wants to make that decision. Um, I agree with trustee Daley. This is something I've been talking about for a year and a half, and we need to get clear. It's what roles, who needs to do what, what has to be done by who. So I agree, we need to figure that out in terms of that. Um. I did want to um speak a little bit. Um, our board is very good about getting very upset anytime someone says something derogatory about uh members of our staff. Yeah, we just had one of our trustees lay really hard into our CAC numbers or volunteers in our community. That was incredibly concerning. I understand there's disorganization, dysfunction. There was disorganization and dysfunction when I came into the CAC two years ago and had this with people that are on the board for years. And we had to work through it. We have a brand new chair of the CAC. We have a brand new trustee liaison who are in the CAC from the meeting that I've listened to. We have new members of the CAC that don't necessarily see eye to eye. And there's a lot of different personalities trying to work through that. Um, that's a process that we all have to work through. But it was incredibly concerning for me as a trustee, and one of my other trustees just threw all of our volunteers who put their bloods on stairs over years into this town and throw them out of the bus. These are the same trustees that get angry anytime someone said anything bad about one of our staff members. I'd like to see that same level of respect for our volunteers of the town.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know, one thing that uh I would think would be very nearsighted is if we try to take our economic development gal or guy or whoever it is uh that we're gonna have for the town and plus Main Street and just make her an event coordinator. I mean, that's the last thing I want to waste her time with. I want her bring business into this community, maximizing her position. Okay, so again, I I think we've got a great group, you know, of course, we got problems. But don't we all have? We got problems here, you know? But I think we, you know, as long as we try to work through it and we treat each other respect respectfully and the same way with the different committees out there, we'll get along. And I still hear that we probably got one of the best Fourth of July events in northern Colorado. And we should be pretty dang proud of that. And we should be pretty dang proud of the volunteers that we have that have put on. Plus the town that supports it. And we've got a great town too. So I I think we, I I love what you said. I love what John said. Put that stuff together. I think we can make this work and work very productive.
Thank you. Um. Representative Allen further?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Keith, anything further?
Since we do have our CAC chair sitting in the audience, I am extremely grateful to almost ten years of your dedication to our community. It is a lot. I know I have been through it. Our board members feel it when they don't feel supported. And they do get harassed a lot for decisions that are made that are possibly beyond the CAC's control. So please do not get discouraged. I know we have safety members also watching online right now that could not attend. Please do not get discouraged. And we are capable of working as a group. We have almost all brand new members sitting on our CAC. Nat and I are pre-existing. Um, me as a representative and Nat as the remaining um member that has been involved in the board for so many years. We had an addition of a member and we slowly are working errors, confusion, issues out. You have to be able to work with people, no matter if you agree, disagree. That is what these kind of boards are all about. We don't always agree. We deal with each other on these boards. We are dysfunctional at times on the board, but it doesn't mean that we can't move forward progressively together. That that would be extremely limiting in looking at the amount of hours that was reported to me um from CAC staff hours, they I was told a hundred and forty hours have gone into the DAC and the planning of the events for the year. That is four thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Look at what that return is when you look at fifteen thousand people attending the Fourth of July. Restaurants being swamped because they cannot attend to everybody. I've heard the stories. We have so many, so many people that are involved. And it's such a dynamic entity in itself. It is a lot of fun. Like, this is my servant generosity. This giving back to our community is what fills my cup. It's also what fills the CAC members that are sitting on this board's cup. So I just wanna make that known going forward. And I would love, we have been running with a skeleton amount of DAC members. I would love to have a full operational board again. That's something that we don't have at this time and we haven't had. I requested we add, but we haven't. So I would love to see us be able to have this discussion on the board moving forward, but also operate with a full amount of volunteers actually sitting on this board. It's a lot to carry when you are seven people that are planning events for anywhere from a thousand, fifteen thousand people.
And I I do wanna, perhaps I owe somewhat of an apology. I don't, but as far as the board members go, certainly I don't mean any discouraging comments as far as that goes. I don't think it's out of line though to point out the way that an entire organization maybe is functioning, not necessarily individuals in the organization. So I do wanna make that point. That in no way do I mean any disparaging remarks towards anybody specifically. I'm simply pointing out that uh the current iteration of the board, I think, is is there there's a lot going on there. And quite frankly, I would invite any of the residents out here that aren't interested, go to some of these meetings, check them out, see what you think. And give us your input, so.
Yeah, um, so my thoughts on this being, um, I believe it's outgrown its current model. Um, the town has outgrown the CAC's current model. Um, we're going to have to reorganize it, address it some way, shape, or fashion to keep the town out of anything legally, liability wise, save the town money. Um, but we still need to be able to involve the community and let them have their input on the events that uh will be going on for the town. Um, like Dan said, he doesn't really know what remains for the CAC. That's something that is difficult. I know that it has not been running well. I talked to multiple members. And I got an email the day from one that I had not yet met. Um, and it states that the meetings are chaotic, last minute, extremely unorganized. Um, they're not doing any service for the town with our meetings to the time spent wasted with arguments and how they how they operate and people's personal opinions. Um, we need to figure something out. And I don't think the current model is working. Um, if we want people to be involved, we want community involved, we need to have a working, functioning organization. I know trustee Gator stated that it's not about being efficient or the other nature. Uh, it it is, but we're going through budgeting and facing money and costs. Every time there's back and forth communication or a staff member given a task last minute, uh that staff member's pulled off of a more important task that could be handled to fulfill something for the CAC. Or Dan has spent time trying to draft new ordinance. Um, all these things are, they add up. They may be small amounts here and there, uh but you know, a hundred things makes a dollar. And we need to keep every dollar that we can um with where we're heading economically with where the town is. Needs to be, in my opinion, reorganized. I don't know what that looks like, but that's where I'm at.
I have awesome ideas.
That you do. That you, where it's sitting right now, though.
It's not functioning correctly. I'm not, I am not disagreeing.
So as a board, we need to, I mean, we need to come up with a direction to go with this.
And I think what uh trustee Daley said, that's a good start right there. Measurable, you know, everything has its duty. And uh you don't need to break everything down in some way. I think you can repair this and make it a very functional part.
I think a good addition to that is for those of you who've attended the meetings, set up a copy with the chair of the CAC with the trustee liaison, not to chew them out or yell at them, but to give your constructive feedback on, hey, I've been sitting in your meetings, here's some things that I've seen, here's some ways that I think it could run better. I I mean, maybe you've done that, I don't know if you have or not, but I I I'm sure that um I I know the chair, I'm sure she'd be more than happy to get constructive feedback on how she can run better meetings. So I I think that figuring out what exactly those rules are, trustee Daley's idea is great. And then for those who've been to the meetings and seen the problems, let that let the people who are there know what they can fix so they can work on fixing them. So I mean, as a board, are we saying that we we would move forward about the the town pursuing something where they they control the items, their liability, and we look at what the CAC how they will function as a advisory committee outside of that? I think that we can give direction to staff, but we can't, so they can bring us back something because we have those official ordinance. But we're, I would agree to change, we can't have them signing contracts. We should change it to where it's legally, they they can't sign contracts. They can't officially, they can give us recommended things.
Um, I would love to do and try out this Racy item with this meeting. I would love to try out this Racy item with the CAC board to kind of accumulate everything that we do and accomplish and then see from that evaluation angle if it is successful. I think that it's huge that our our commissioners on that board get to actually weigh in on productivity.
Would we be, would we, would we be guiding the town to, I mean, basically dismantle the CAC ordinance and come up with a new completely operating function? Is that what we're on a green song?
That it's town with handfuls. Is that what we're looking at? Is the town sampling it or?
The ordinance and then restructuring.
As a new.
As a completely new committee. Well, then, well, yeah, we're just, right now, we're doing the town direction and then it will come back for.
And trustee McDonald, customer, mayor pro temp McDonald, pass our hand raised.
Or mayor pro temp McDonald?
Um, I, Mayor K, or I think you're asking some really great questions. And trustee Daley brought up a great point before. Something that's worked really well is the like these roundtable groups to kind of mediate the situation. I think putting this entire decision in the hands of the CAC and then having the board sit up here and try and hash this out tonight is not gonna be productive. I think with that, we should probably bring this back and talk about how we can bring in um a neutral third party group to kind of decide, you know, what, how volunteers can participate and use the structure that trustee Kenny uh suggests, I'm sorry, trustee Daley suggested for, that was used at like the Main Street program. I thought that was a really uh great idea. And so night between the two of us, you know, going back and forth, and that'll kind of, maybe that's a middle ground.
Yeah, and and remember, then you're talking about the the Racy, correct?
I'm talking about this ordinance and disbanding the CAC altogether. Like if it's, we've took, like, let's state the facts. We've, everybody, the liaison has stated that there are, it's dysfunctional at times at the moment. The purpose of the CAC has evolved over time. I've served on the CAC as a volunteer since two thousand and ten. My daughter started a community cleanup in two thousand and twelve. Mayor Brinkoff's daughter did a community cleanup back in two thousand and six with the CAC. So it changes and it evolves over time. The situation is, is that the population of the town has grown. It's turned into a safety concern. It's turned into a financial liability. And the scope and purpose of the CAC is to provide volunteer opportunities so that the community feels engaged and like they are providing value. I think that's really important. I think that's extremely important to highlight over and over again. That one of the primary goals of this roundtable is to establish how this volunteer committee can efficiently provide direction to the trustees regarding large scale events in the community. I mean, breaking it way down simply before, you know, it was, they shouldn't be approving contracts. They should be deciding on what the theme is for the Fourth of July. It it's an overall policy creative decision, not getting down in the weeds that puts the board at financial liability, making legal decisions, or putting people's safety at risk. We have great volunteers who have great ideas. Let's use their creative thoughts and let the professionals take care of the elements that put the community and board at risk. So I think a a roundtable is a great way to kind of mediate the situation.
Thank you. Thank you. There's one. Um, what what are we, what are we doing?
Uh, I think the CAC, um, as it is, but there's no reason to reorganize the ordinance. That's essentially what we're doing.
Do not reorganize the ordinance.
Well, I mean, the CAC as it is, is, should not exist anymore, but we need to see what to do instead. But what still accomplishes and stuff that we have to.
So, okay, so. Okay, so.
Two things.
This, this banning the CAC and then setting up a roundtable for how to redevelop it.
Or how operates forward, I think, great idea.
Yeah, where you, uh, cause.
Yeah, I mean, either or really, I mean, but yes, I mean, it's very clear that. It needs to be pretty much entirely restructured, whether that means get rid of the current ordinance or. Modify the existing ordinance with what I assume would be very different language than what it has now. Yeah, I, but either way, yes, something has to.
Trustee Gator. I am absolutely fine with doing research into how improve things, what the roles are in restructuring the CAC. I am absolutely against abandoning the CAC. At heart, so that is not a position that I was supporting before.
Trustee Teets, your stance?
I'm not okay with disbanding the CAC completely. As it was mentioned, this is evolving and transitioning through the years. Things have changed, things do evolve, but the one thing is the CAC, CAC remaining intact. Even through all of the differences, the changes, the complications from two thousand three, the CAC still remained. The CAC is known for the events that it does host. This. I'm not okay with disbanding the CAC, but I will not disagree that we have a conversation on how it functions in general. So I am okay with discussing how it functions. I'm okay with looking at legality issues of everything. Removing liability, totally fine with that. I am not comfortable saying that the CAC does not have a purpose anymore, cause that is just ridiculous, honestly. There's so much purpose to volunteering, still not a purpose.
Maybe volunteer around too already.
Yeah, I need everybody to acknowledge that, that community is really vital. That's no, no one, that's the only.
Okay.
Yeah.
Trustee begin. You know, Main Street, uh, kind of redid or completely reorganization. Still got the same thing, but they did a complete reorganization here. We're gonna accomplish a lot of stuff in the process, okay? They didn't disband everything, they didn't tear it down. They didn't start from the very beginning again. We've got a good core here to a certain extent. You know, you don't throw away the, uh, what, the dirty water with baby in it. I forget the exact terminology in that. But, uh, you know, you've got a great bunch of people here. You've got the organization already set. You bring everybody else in, you know, you've got the Easter thing coming up, you've got, uh, you know, Halloween. I mean, just think, if we disbanded right now, what the heck would happen to all those events, trying to get everybody to do roundtables? We got something that's functioning, may not be perfect. We can make it a hell of a lot better. I think with some great ideas that, uh, trustee, uh, daily put in and, uh, trustee Gator has and. I, I am completely against dismantling, dismantling it. I think, uh. You know, don't start all over from the beginning and you may get behind an eight ball and you may, guess what? You have six months down the road, we might be having a Fourth of July trying to keep going. And we don't have anybody who wants to potentially do it anymore. So again, utilize what we got and get great people. And let's improve on it, okay? That's my thought.
When I would ask if we are going to discuss this banning this, that this be allowed to be brought back to public comment first before there's any conversation about that?
Absolutely has to be. Um, there's no way to legally do that without doing that.
Regarding this banning too, I, I don't wanna put any extra effort into the existing ordinance.
Right.
That's, that's where the.
And you're, you're how far into that, you mean, the ordinance?
Um, I didn't prioritize at this stage, I've, uh, I look at by record which, you know, it's, we, we don't time very accurately, but I group a lot of things together. I'd estimate on CAC issues over the last sixty, ninety days, uh, twelve fifteen hours. And that's part of this conversation is I wanna know how much. How, 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 how the board is prioritizing this and how do I need to prioritize this? Uh, there's a lot going on in the town and budget, so.
How much, how many more hours if we're starting from scratch is, I don't know.
But I, I don't know, it's hard to say, but. A good number, you know? And that, so that's, that's a big part of.
And sticking with the ordinance and just regraffing it to where it makes sense, but there's really nothing for the CAC to do?
Well, I don't want to say there's nothing for the CAC to do, but I'm not, I'm not. If I read it, after I remove the items, if I remove the items that are of concern, if I re-use what's left. I, I'm not sure that I can even understand the, what it does.
What it's functioning.
What it's functioning, how it, how it operates, the how that the ordinance is. And so modifying the current ordinance. There's a lot of work that goes into determining what that didn't say, actual drafting of the ordinance. That's not an incredible amount of time, but the. The terminal goes into that, and then, you know, more meetings and rounds here and there. And there's a lot of other, it's not just me.
Yeah, I, I mean, I fall in line with, nevermind, Donald, trustee daily. The banning and coming up with a roundtable source to do these things, so that's, that's my stance is, um.
So it sounds like at that point, then you would give staff direction and put together something around expanding the CAC and bring that back to the board and then be in a proper public comment, people build speak to that.
I think part of that too should be maybe a presentation of the RAC as to what, what the move forward is. And because just saying goes away, that's one thing, but not saying what is it replaced with and who, who starts up the thing more potentially? Paying volunteers, we're not throwing anyone away. We just wanna operate different, so it's productive. Um, so. I, so hand in hand, those have to go together. So, and then this is the process that we did, just to lay it out so everyone can understand. We, we have a Main Street program come with a list of like every single thing that they did. And then, um, you know, what does Dole do? A giant list of all those kind of things. And then we group them by functionality. So like, we can group all these staff together as one thing, all these together as one thing. And then we assign who have to be kind of more responsible based on what jobs that they're gonna have, right? So that's how it aligns there. So I don't think we can say exactly what that new committee might look like until after we've done that. So I think a great presentation would be, you know, kind of a, a, a working RAC model as to what legally we could and should move forward with. And then make a recommendation on a, a similar kind of thing like the finance committee could be done that way. And then what the roles and responsibility is linked as to what those, those job functions are that we've all agreed to at that point. So, I mean, that accomplishes the same things. We have amazing volunteers who likely wanna participate in that committee as well. I mean, they should have options though. They, they are understanding how it might operate going forward, but. But I, I have no problem with that, even the same people get in the committee and put, that's the priority, but making it motion and operate safely, legally. And, you know, with that real goal scope.
Yeah, because I mean, my thought process is that if people have a servant heart and they wanna volunteer, they'll find a way to do it, give them opportunity, they'll be there. Um, so yeah, I would say the direction the board with, um. We can bring something back to the board for public comment on, yes.
So this RAC exercise, I assume we would need to do that in potentially work session, you know, is that? I, I'm just.
Yeah.
I, I'm trying to schedule you now.
Work session.
Very happy. Would be super preferred as well, and a lot of those items.
Okay, all right, then I will, I can, we can work with your checklist to find out, so you schedule that in, if that would be okay? Okay, sounds good. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just, suddenly I saw, I didn't want to close out the meeting.
Yeah, so, um, come up with something to bring back to us, please. Um, there are another act, action items on regular agenda tonight. And I've booked a regular meeting and opened the last authority board, time being nine, ten, negative roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Daly. Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temp McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you.
Uh, exists agenda. It's just a permitted malt beverage license renewal for the Come and Go LLS and the retail liquor store license renewal for big venture LLC. EBA income liquor. Negative motion through, please. Comment. Second, negative roll call, please.
A couple comments, but, you know, nothing wrong. I just wanted to say to staff, I really appreciate the liquor inspection reports being added to this packet. It was incredibly helpful to actually just kind of see the different steps that were gone through, reviewing that. So that was a great addition. Please keep those coming. That's very good. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Right now, roll call. Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yeah.
Trustee Nathan.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yeah.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you.
On the reports, anything from the town attorney? Ms. Garcia.
No report, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one, one minute, one second. I wanna thank the trustees for their, for the luncheon that they provided to the, to the town staff. It was so appreciated. They talked about it, to break the food was, and it really meant a lot. So thank you to all of you that were able to participate.
Um, any staff communications? And any more reports? Start with trustee.
Um, I've been honored recently and I wanted to share that with you before in the town because essentially, uh, I was honored by Ben West Magazine as a recipient of the forty under forty. Um, and I was nominated as, as an employee of the town of Wellington, primarily, although, um, I'm also employee of Paulson. Um, but, uh, I wanted to attribute this recognition to the entire board and the work that Wellington's doing. Because, uh, a lot of that work that I was recognized for has been a result of the entire board working together and then the support of the town. Um, and my many volunteer opportunities within the town that I, I sought out and I, I worked with. So, uh, I wanted to say I appreciate you all. And then, um, the word ceremony is gonna be on the next week. And we're on, we have a party at Sparge on that Friday. So if anybody wants to come, uh, we have. Free honorees in the town of Wellington.
No.
And then two others that serve the Boys and Girls Club for the whole, um, Lammer County. So, uh, Wellington has, has a great representation and I'm super proud of how we're being acknowledged for all of them within Colorado. Thank you.
Trustee Gator. Uh, yeah, so just a couple things. One, wanted to thank everyone, um, just in, uh, we've launched it for staff. It was a lot of fun being here, seeing them come in. Uh, the water guys got here early, so they got the, they had limited boxes, like, uh, come, um, less out. Boxes, but he gave us some, so the water guys were, will take their stuff straight to the plant, so they swung by, grabbed their food, cut it out, thank you trustee Nathan for helping get that all set up. I was, uh, a little worried about trying to get it all set up myself. I didn't want staff to have to put together their own lunch, but trustee Nathan helped make it a breeze to get through everything. And I want to thank everyone else for participating, helping get things purchased inside, drinks and food. Uh, it was a great success. I hope that we can. Continue doing things like that. And I think just to me, it meant a lot that it came from each of us, right? And also I think businesses, um, less barbecue, uh, provided food. We also had food provided by, um, Lea and Cleaver. And then we also had drinks provided by AEI, American Medical. AEI provided the drinks for us. So just thank you to everyone who helped to put this together and just, uh, we appreciate thank you to our staff. Um, and then also this is a reminder, um, we'll, albeit Ziggy's coffee will have a twelve, just doing an office hour. My goal is to do it roughly the third Saturday of the month. I'll always work that way once I start ski patrol. Um, this is an open invitation, anyone on board who wants to come, anyone in the community who wants to come out, this is an opportunity for a public comment. It's public comment, not public conversation. So the idea is to give an opportunity that people can come and just have a conversation with elected officials. And I know Miss Garcia can get posted, so it's all posted that there could be more than three of us there. So if you can make it great, if you can't, don't worry about it. Um, it's just an opportunity to get out there and get in front of people if they have a question.
So Saturday, November fifth, we have the Veterans Day celebration. Um, there's a pancake breakfast, a flag ceremony, music by Wellington Community Band, military recognition, and we also have some speakers. We had Justin Smith confirm that he will be giving the welcome to our veterans. So very excited about that. And also looking at a cannon salute. I have not seen one before, but I'm thinking that it's gonna be pretty interesting. Um, so very excited. We have Papa's from Papa's Table Poms actually cooking the pancakes over at T Bar. So, and we have AEI gave their employees for the morning to actually go and cook all the bacon. So it's, we're looking forward to it. I think it's gonna be an awesome event to say thank you to our veterans, military. Thank you. Um, so that's one of the things that I have. And then I want to stem off of Karen's, um, Down Syndrome Awareness Month. So Karen was kind enough to actually provide me with a bunch of information that I'd like to share, probably three minutes if you guys are okay. Um, Down Syndrome Awareness Month was first recognized in nineteen eighty and has been recognized every October since that time. Down Syndrome Awareness Month is a great time to help the community to understand the many activities people living with Down Syndrome possess. So people living with Down Syndrome want to participate in life, their community, both jobs, and build meaningful connection with people of all abilities. October is Down Syndrome Awareness Month. It's. If you know anyone who lives with Down Syndrome, October is a great time to reach out to your community members. Every day is a great day to do so, but every October is great to remember to revisit the many ways that are possible to learn more about people with Down Syndrome and disabilities in our community. So that was a big one that I would ask to share. So that's what I have no issue sharing. Also, the last one is a food truck rally that's getting ready to happen here in town, um, the twenty second. And looking forward to being able to welcome a bunch of different food trucks to our area downtown in Centennial Park on October twenty second.
Thank you.
Um, can I ask a quick question? Um, just, Mayor Shosse, would you like us to prepare proclamation for the next meeting in October for Down Syndrome Awareness?
Yeah, so that'd be awesome.
Thank you. Absolutely. Well, I will get with you, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you for thinking of that. I'm not that, I'm not that quick on.
If you know of these things, let me know. We don't follow it a lot. So if you know, it's like a month of something or a week, let me know and we'll work on a proclamation.
Trustee begin, the report. Uh, Mayor Pro Temp McDonald.
Nothing, no thank you.
And, um, I also, yeah, nothing. I'm, thank you, um, everybody that, for the meal, obviously. Um, we do staff for these ones, but you guys deserve that, we should do it. Um, so who's the best food?
It was all so good. I had a little bit of everything, so.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.